Yeah, what's what's going on? What's the problem?
I don't know. I just I just got in. I've been. I've had the spinning wheel of death for nine minutes, so.
Yeah, me too. It's it's a great time. So that go around.
Yeah, but I'm glad we're here. Madam, thanks for your patience. Did you just get in?
Yes, likewise. Hello.
Okay. And I'm texting Anthony and saying, yes, whoops. He's asking if I'm in, I'm saying, yep. Okay.
Who do you got on, Peter?
Who who do we have on on the meeting?
Planning board members.
So right now there are there are three of us. There's George, yours, you and myself. That I can see. I don't. Right, nobody else yet.
We probably should definitely wait because we don't have a quorum to deal with. Adams project at this point till Sarah gets on. And as I said yesterday, I think it makes more sense for the board to deal with the height of a structure issue first.
Yeah, I agree with that since it affects Adams application.
Yep, yeah, exactly. And I suspect that Anthony and Julie are working on making the connections for others who might be joining.
Adam, is this going to be a busy year for you?
Yeah, we're booked solid pretty much all summer into the fall and looking at houses for next winter. So we're busy, which is good.
Yeah, that is good. It's funny with things the pandemic doesn't affect.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes you get lucky, I guess. I mean, you never know, though.
I'll take luck any day, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Do your best to plan, but if you have good luck happening, great. Hey, Adam, you know how the pandemic has made building materials a real shoe? Either in short supply or expensive or both. Has that had an impact on on people's plans for either size or or type of structures to be built?
Yeah, I mean, we've lost some or got put on hold just because of material prices, but the only like saving grace in all of it is like home values of like skyrocketed so that extra extra money that it costs to build that they're able to make that up on the resale side or, you know, on the appraisal side.
Yeah.
Right.
Because you'd you'd be doing stick homes, basically, right? I mean, lots of two by six, two by four sheathing, you know, rig.
Yes.
Trusses and all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, they've always, I mean, sticks and cheese has always been cheap. So on that side of it for it to go up or double, you know, it's not a crazy amount, but if everything else starts going up, which it is, then it's gonna add a lot more costs, you know, to a house.
Yeah. Not that it's going to impact your at all. I had seen just recently on the news, watching the news and and a couple of enterprising groups were starting to print out walls. They print using a device that's basically pouring concrete layers, almost like if you were dispensing ice cream from a soft soft serve thing. So it would just, you know, lay lay down, you know, layer after layer, build up eight foot walls. They do it on site and there's your wall, then move and we'll print another wall.
Yeah, that's cool. I mean, it's probably hard to find labor to do it, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Be exact.
And it's not for everybody, right? Not everybody's gonna want, you know, a concrete structure. Because it presents its own, you know, issues, I suppose, but.
Right, I mean, down south, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, they were saying, he said they could whip up a house. I say whip, my words, not theirs, like three days with like a four person crew. Oh.
It's crazy. The termites down in the south.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Must have seen that commercial on TV with the termites on the deck.
Yeah.
Wait, he throws something at it and yeah.
Well, it's interesting that, you know, one of the many things that I never would have thought of that last year, there was just this big boom in the construction of in-ground pools. And so the consequence of that this year is that there's a shortage of pool chemicals.
Yeah, my son was saying she needs to get some quick.
Yep.
Yeah, it makes makes perfect sense. You know, as soon as the pandemic hit, everything went completely booked out. Took a year to get most in-ground pools and what I was hearing last spring and this summer.
Yeah, a lot of people got hurt and a lot of people gained, did well as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah.
Still nobody.
What's that, Rich?
Still nobody else.
Not yet. I just checked my text messages to see if there was any indication that Sarah, Craig, Pete might be coming in. I haven't seen anything yet.
I mean, if you are addressing the height size, I mean, that's fine with me if we gotta, if you want to talk about that and I can hang out and wait instead of nothing else on my schedule for tonight, so.
I was gonna say, you might want to hang out for the discussion.
I do. I was planning to anyways.
Yeah, there's not that TV anyway, Adam.
I don't watch TV.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get at least one more member.
Yeah, I'm hoping so, too.
And hopefully it'll be Sarah. Otherwise, I'll come back again.
So Adam, the I thought you'd like this. I watched this one YouTube video today during before supper that was short, but it was this, these kids, they're in Jackson and they're trying to, they were with ski schooler and they were skiing Corbets.
Nice.
They were doing this kind of goat path entryway, so they weren't airing it out because it was all hard packed. So they'd kids, 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 you know, down and then and then kind of rut, if you will, at the bottom. And I don't know if these kids were like, I don't know if they were, they weren't 12, you know, not not very big and all flyweights, you know, so I thought it was good to see.
Nice.
I thought you'd like it since you're you're who are, you know.
Yeah, it's named after, so.
Exactly. So it was pretty cool. So so just so so you know, my favorite entryway on on Corbets was from skiers left the west wall on that side. So in the nook, kind of facing facing back towards the rope and just kind of lift up and and there are some rocks there. You just kind of aired out. You don't go really far off the snow, but you drop probably 12 feet or something. And but no one goes that way because it's you have to be pretty precise with it, but if you can do it, it's like the smoothest ride ever, right? It just touched down below some rocks and you miss all the crap. Yes. I see other guests here or in the waiting room. I see Mark Tibbetts in the waiting room. Looks like Katie D. Baradino is in the waiting room. It looks like Galaxy S twenty FE five G, which I decode that to mean Gary is in the waiting room. Wonder, oh, and Pete Sargent's there. Let me wonder. Wonder if I can admit them. You're the Zoom. Oh, and Anthony is telling me I think I can. Okay, you are the Zoom host now. Admit them all. Standby. People are coming in. So.
That's Peter.
Okay, hi, Pete. Katie, hello. Mark Tibbetto is coming in in a second. He's connecting to audio. Rich was still waiting for Sarah, correct?
Yeah.
There were three of you that had that conversation before.
If we.
Conversation, right?
If she doesn't come in, we might want to give her a buzz. I don't like him. Try to find your number.
Okay.
Peter, do you want me to have Becky send her a reminder text? Because she, I believe, has her cell phone number.
That would be wonderful if you could.
I'll be right back.
Okay. So just for others, Katie and Mark, thanks for joining us tonight. Want to let you know, we we are waiting to have other people join this meeting. We've had technical problems so far, but we're slowly getting up to speed. So we want to your patience and thank you in advance for this slow start.
No problem.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Good. Becky, send her a text right now.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Peter's muted, though, isn't he?
Yeah, Pete, Pete Sergeant. Come off mute, Pete. Learning curve for. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're all there.
In. George, I think your text may work. And if not, I know Anthony is going to try calling her. So hopefully we'll connect.
Suppose we could start the conversation about height of structure.
Yeah, I think I think so. And just want to make sure, Rich, are you comfortable that we start that conversation?
Yeah, I think I was just gonna say it may be that Craig's not on because initially we indicated that we were going to deal with Adams project first and there'd be a delay before getting into regular business that didn't involve the the special meeting that we had. But I I guess I'm prepared to test the height.
Okay. Now, let's see, just one second. This is a matter of logistics. I want to make sure that our secretary is with us. I do not see her. I think it may be, but we are recording, so I think we're good. Seeing the little indication that we're recording, so. Let's let's go for it, shall we? And get started. Want to honor people's time. So height of structure discussion.
Yeah, you want me to start, Peter?
Please do, Rich.
Okay, at our special planning board meeting that we had now, whenever the date was of that, we had two applications. Adam Gardner's application was one of them that dealt with an issue of whether or not the building was higher than allowed by the ordinance, which the ordinance, our ordinance says that the height of a structure maximum height is 25 feet in the shoreline zone. The issue is, and there's a the issue that we dealt with that we're dealing with is where to measure the the beginning for the height of the structure. I know we all know that we measure on a downhill side. But the the I'll give you the example of the feeder application, which proposes to have a structure and it's on a slope. Now, there's a diagram that George put together in the packet. And that diagram shows a structure with a deck on the front. The question is, do this does this structure height begin at the bottom of the post of the deck? Or does it begin at the foundation of the main structure of the camp? And I my thinking, my thoughts on this is that the measurement for building height is measured at the base of the deck and not the base of the foundation toward that 25 foot height limitation. And I my thinking on this is that there's the height of the structure, and I'll read the definition of the height of the structure is the vertical distance between the mean original grade prior to construction at the downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas and similar departances that have no floor area. And then a structure says clearly includes decks. That's one of the things listed as a structure. And then accessory structure. And I'll read that because it's important here is to how the what the accessory structure excludes. Accessory structure or use is a a use or structure which is incidental and subordinate to the principal's use or structure. Accessory structures when aggregated shall not subordinate the principal's use of the lot. A deck or extension of the principal structure where a garage attached to a principal structure by a roof or common wall is considered part of the principal structure. So my reasoning and my thought here is that the deck is clearly part of the structure. And the height of a structure says you measure essentially the deck being a structure. There's Sarah. Are you muted? Anyway. And on that diagram, you can see that and this this came up in discussions with Elliot there at the one of the site visits and the applicant argues that we he should you be using B on the the attached schematic. And my thinking is that we'd be using the A, which is the front edge of the deck. I'd also say that Elliot, when we told him our thinking, he contacted Colin Clark at the DEP and Colin indicated that the DEP measure would measure from the the main structure, not the front of the structure. He really gave no reason why, other than the main structure is built first. That to me doesn't make any sense. And I I just going by the definitions, I don't know how we could conclude conclude differently that the front edge of the deck is part of the structure and you measure from the lowest mean original grade of the structure. So I don't know whether people understand what I said or have questions or have comments, but that that's my my thinking on this matter.
I would, yeah, I would just add one thing. Measuring it at the closest point of the structure to the lake is our longstanding practice. Going back to the 1990s. In fact, we just issued a permit to Mr. De Palma on that very basis and placed a condition on it saying that that's where it will be measured. Why? And and we, I think everybody received this email. No, actually, it was just Gary, myself, Rich and Sarah received an email, a CC on an email to Elliot from Colin Clark, along with to the supervisor. And and as Rich said, it it's almost like he's answering a different question. Or a different set of facts. It's almost like he's answering the question of why they measure at the foundation on wall B on the schematic. Because as if the deck was added later rather than it's all part of the same principal structure. So that that's just very confusing confusing to the issue. The other thing is DEP's actually changed its practices on this. As Rich noted in his memo, there was guidance from DEP, written guidance in the form of a brochure or pamphlet, educational pamphlet done and distributed by the main real estate. Train indicating that where you measure it. I'm sorry, Richard, you say something?
Oh, I was just gonna say that wasn't the real estate people. That was the DEP shoreline zoning unit itself printed that document.
Right, and they distributed it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, but no, that's the important point, though, that that was by DEP. So, you know, clearly DEP's changed its reading of the law and also of their own regulations. And I don't see how they can do that without changing the regulations, which they had an opportunity to do so in 2016 and chose not to. And I think frankly, we're in the same boat. If we should choose to want to interpret or interpret isn't even the right word. If we want to have the the if we want to start measuring the maximum height at the at B on the schematic rather than A, which we've done historically, then I think we need to change the ordinance. I think we need to change the definition section of height of a structure at a minimum.
I agree with that myself.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, listening to Rich there explaining the basis of what he's talking about. The law is crystal clear as to where you do start. And by the definitions he read there. So I think we need to follow what our ordinance says. So I I really don't see, it needs to be any too much more more for the discussion about this. It should be at the A underneath the projected deck, so.
Yep, quickly, Adam, yes.
I'll just real quick on that. So if you're gonna measure from the closest point to the lake, so if I have a building that's out of the hundred foot, within 250 feet of the lake, and someone wants me to go put a deck on it, that's not going to be any higher than what's there or anything, but going out, say, eight feet, and say we go down the hill one foot that they would not be allowed to build that deck because of the height requirement. You know, it's an existing building that meets a 25 foot and they come back and say, hey, we want you to build a deck. Well, we're under the square footages. We have everything else makes it. But because the slope of the land maybe goes down one foot, so then you're gonna measure from the front of that deck to the existing buildings. It's 26 feet at that point. Would that be a denied permit?
I, my thinking is that we would have to deny it because it's it becomes part of the structure. And the structure just I had to answer the phone and then delete it or whatever. It's still ringing in the background. But anyway, that the definitions, as Peter said, and I said earlier, say you measure from the front edge of the structure, where you put the deck on, that structure becomes part of the structure. The deck becomes part of the structure and height is measured from the front edge of the structure. So I I I guess my I'm saying I think we would count that. I saw George shaking his head. I'm not sure whether what that meant.
Well, I I was just gonna say, I think I'm not sure, to be honest with you, myself, but I think that's the I think that's the question that Colin Clark actually answered. I think I'm guessing here that he was answering a different question than what he was asked. And and he answered the question that you just raised, Adam, that on they would that DEP would measure at the foundation rather than at the front of the front of the deck.
But but your definition doesn't say when anything was built. It's.
Yeah, no. I mean, that's a good question. I don't recall us encountering that before, but what we've encountered the most of is when the when the well, the two scenarios we have before us, one, when it's an entirely brand new structure. Or two, when a structure is being moved back, a non-conforming structure is being moved back to the greatest practical extent, which is what the Federer is. And it includes a deck. And and so what the total height or the maximum height can be of that new structure, essentially new structure is in question.
So I I would like to say that based on the definition, the current definition we have in our ordinance, I would I would agree with what Rich, George and Pete have talked about relative to this idea that the structure that's being proposed, the measuring point would be at the front of that structure. So it's what we have here. Now, if in the future, we're not supposed to interpret that way, because if DEP is changing something about what they're doing, and if we we want to align our ordinance with those new practices, that would be something we would want to take into account, right? And and do so. That's that's my thinking.
Yeah, I think you're agreeing with George and I that if we're gonna change our practice, we need to change the the definition section. Otherwise, like I said, I I don't know how you can interpret it any differently by reading the definitions right now.
Yep, be understood and that's my thinking. I don't know, Sarah, I.
I I do agree with that.
Yes, okay.
I agree with what the group had discussed and review in it. We we still have to go, in my view, we still have to go by the ordinance. If we probably based on this, we keep getting cases and more. based on this, if we keep getting cases and more, um, applications with the same item, then we will have to reconvene and rethink about it. But unfortunately, because it have been the standard for so long, um, it wouldn't be fair to the previous, uh, work that have been done.
Go ahead, Rich.
I was wondering if, uh, I don't wanna cut the discussion short, but if, if the planning board members are in agreement, do we have to make some kind of a motion or we're just kinda at this point, say, this is, we're agreeing with the position we've had and not changing anything?
Go ahead, George.
I, I would think a motion would be appropriate if for no other reason, out of fairness to like Adam and, and, um, and the other applicants that, you know, where this impacts them. Um, and also, I, I was also thinking that maybe we should, um, uh, get back to, uh, not only, um, well, Adam's right here, of course, but, um, those other folks, but maybe even Colin and let him know that, you know, we simply disagree and, and what our position is and why, basically by sending him Rich's memo. Yeah, um, and, uh, uh, you know, a motion, uh, and a vote on a motion would, you know, kinda tie that all up into a package.
Yep. Yeah, I agree. So, so at this point, I would entertain a motion on this very sensitive and important topic when it's ready.
I, I guess I'll make a motion that, um, to accept, um, the, the rationale and, and recommendations of Rich's memo of May first and to continue our past practice of measuring at the closest height, maximum height at the closest point to the lake.
So, so does this impact, uh, Mark Tibido's application for the Kruger extension of the garage as well? I, I, I'm third on the list of discussions for tonight. Does that concern my, um, application, permit application?
Hey, Mark, I don't know what's, I don't know what the height of your, your
Yeah. I don't know either. I don't think that's been an issue so far, but
Right.
The first time.
So we have a motion on the floor. Um, do we hear a second?
Oh, I second it.
Sarah's second. Uh, any more discussion on this? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, so all those in favor, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So that's five in favor, none opposed. So that will be our our deciding, um, method, if you will, of measuring height of a structure. So having that, bearing that in mind, can we, is it appropriate now to take up Adam's application? He is first on the list.
Uh, yes.
Wrap this up with DEP. Do you have Rich send his memo to Colin or?
I will do that and I will also call him a couple of days later and discuss it with him as well.
And, and I think it's, thank you for doing that, Rich. And I think that it's real important to be to be mindful of the fact that if there are gonna be changes in the way DEP is interpreting this, that we should be aware of what those are so we can, if we choose to adopt those practices that DEP is doing, to have our, the verbiage and our ordinance be aligned with that. That's gonna be important to all of the
Remembering that we're, we're well within our rights to be more stringent than DEP.
True, true. We may not want to be exactly in alignment, but at least be aware of it anyway. Okay, so Rich, thanks for sending that out to Colin and so first up is Adam.
Can I, can I ask a question before we get going?
Sure.
Where I have the latest agenda that I was working from, but the agenda that I have didn't have Mr. Tibido on a, one of our items tonight. Was it, was there an agenda I missed in between?
I, I think so, cause he was added on, on, I, the, the agenda that I have, the board packet that comes from the online agenda.
Yeah.
That's found there. Definitely includes items under old business, A, B and C, and C is Mark Tibido. Twenty-four unfinished lane.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, in case he wasn't on, that he wasn't hanging around for nothing.
Right.
Okay.
Rich, did, did you, um, does the agenda you have, uh, include the change in the commercial application that we're gonna be taking up tonight?
No, no, I received a copy of the, um, the application, but I didn't, I guess I didn't get a new agenda. Uh, and, uh, so anyway, uh, we'll work through that as we go.
Okay.
All right, uh, we'll go to, uh, Mark's application and Peter and, Peter and Peter, uh, will not be able to vote on this because, uh, weren't part of the special meeting that we had, uh, last week. I think it was last week. Uh, but, uh, we went through the application and appears that there were, I think, three items that were not included in his application that he needed to provide for us. And one of them was the uh, septic system permit and the number of the certified contractor. And the material submitted since then, I believe, addressed both of those items. Uh, the, the other item is the height of the structure. And I can tell you that my, we're looking at the materials, I couldn't tell what the height of the structure was or uh, that it, it didn't clarify for me that the structure was gonna be uh, under twenty-five feet. And so we need, may need some discussion from him on this.
Yep. So basically, ba- back in two thousand thirteen, I built a garage, uh, for Mr. Mr. Kruger. And it was on post. And what I did at the driveway with the garage, met the driveway, I dug down a foot and I built the, the deck of the garage. I lowered it one foot into the driveway. So when they drove out of the driveway, existing driveway, they just drove straight into the garage, persatreated framing, two layers of three-quarter Adventic. So in my application, I considered that as the base of my beginning of a new structure. What they would like to do is take the roof off this garage that I built and add a second story for their kids and grandkids that show up for like, for a big, uh, family room and a, and a bathroom up in that second story. So the height of the structure is very flexible. On the plans, I, I labeled it starting at the driveway level, going up eight feet for the first story. Engineered floor trusses for the deck of the second story and then sidewalls and, and trusses. So I can, if twenty-five feet is my limit, I can do that by lowering the sidewalls of the second story, cause then I could use scissor trusses to give them room upstairs to walk around in. So do I start at the driveway elevation and go up twenty-five feet? Or do I start at the, the bottom of the PT framework? Which, which is where the siding started and go up twenty-five feet, which is approximately eleven inches below a driveway grade? So I've got no problem with adjusting the height of the addition of the peak, as long as I know where to start measuring from, either from the three-quarter Adventic, which is level with the driveway. Cause from, from the driveway, it slopes down. So the back of the garage is probably a foot, foot and a half off the ground because, because of the grade sloping away, which, which slopes away from the lake. So if I'm told twenty-five feet from the driveway or the three-quarter Adventic that's in the existing garage is my limit, then I will build the structure according to that. If I'm told twenty-five feet to the bottom of the PT framework, then I will build the new structure according to that. Basically, what I did is I put pads on the ground and, and the lower sloped area did three beams on top of these, uh, six by six, which went down to the pads and then did framework on top of the three beams. And that's what supports the floor of the garage. So I can build the height of the structure at a maximum of twenty-five feet, as long as I know where to start that.
I have a question for you, Rich. Um, the averaging, uh, aspect of the measurement, that's only, uh, if there's a change in elevation, if we're looking at the site plan from, uh, right to left or left to right, uh, which is the lakeside, uh, of the garage rather than, uh, from, uh, trying to find where north and south is on this. But anyway, um, the, uh, versus in the, uh, perpendicular to that.
Yeah, I, I think I understand, uh, when you're measuring height and you, you said the average is the mean original grade, it would be as if the, you had a slope of the land that's parallel to the water is sloping and down two feet on the inside of the structure than versus the other. The mean original grade would be one, you take that at the one, the height would be at the one foot elevation between the two.
Yeah. So a question for you, Mr. Tibido. It, it looks from the photograph like that's pretty, uh, pretty much the same elevation all the way across on the lakeside of the garage. Is that correct?
So on the lakeside of the garage, the, the right side of the garage is the Adventic is level with the driveway, so they drive in. And then it slopes from right to left and it goes down. So, so the left end of the garage is on post. And again, it's been ten plus years, so it's probably a foot, foot and a half from the bottom of the framework to the ground, you know, to the pad I put in the ground. So it slopes from right to left slightly.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was looking at the wrong photograph. I see what you mean now.
Yeah, if, if you look at the schematic of the entire lot as opposed to the photograph.
Right.
So you see how the, you see how the driveway is a circular driveway?
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
So, so the right side of that garage is parallel to the driveway, which was elevated, you know, compared to the rest of the lot. So it slopes from the driveway heads left and slopes, slopes down slightly. And so the, the, the left side, which is the backside of the garage, is probably, you know, foot and a half, you know, maybe two feet off the ground at the most. So if, if you tell me, Mark, you need to start, you know, the twenty-five feet from the right side of the garage or the middle of the garage or left side of the garage. And do I start at the Adventic, which is the, you know, the, the top of the deck? Or do I start at below the framework, which is top of the beam per se? So not, not knowing how it's calculated, I think the pictures you see, I estimated the twenty-five feet to start from the top of the Adventic, you know, as if you're standing in front of the garage looking at that picture, you know, of the overhead doors.
Right.
But I can lower the peak if you give me a limit. Obviously, like I said, I can lower the peak. I can lower the sidewalls of the second story and use scissor trusses on the inside to keep the peak down. I could put a six and a half foot sidewall and then start a scissor chop going up so they could use the upstairs.
So I, my thought was, uh, with, for, uh, was that, um, that it would be the elevation, the starting elevation would be ground level on the, um, let's see, uh,
On the driveway?
No, ground level on, on the, uh, other end of, of that side of the, uh, gar- garage. Because it sounded like the way you described it, that was the original elevation before the garage was built. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the original elevation. Um, well, the, the driveway was already there.
Oh, the driveway is already there?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. The, the entire property was already there. It's been there for a lot of years. Um, I can't remember the exact date, but Dave Hollowell put in a, a septic system there in a driveway. You know, probably fifteen, twenty years ago. I don't know when, um, but the, they contracted me to build the garage. And the driveway was already there. So that's why I, that's why I dug down a foot to allow for the decking of the, of the new garage. So they just drove in from the existing driveway right into the Adventic. And I put the Adventic probably an inch or two above the elevation of the driveway, just to keep rain out. So, so the driveway elevation was there existing.
Well, for Sarah and Rich, what do you think about the idea of, um, and I, I believe this is consistent with what you described earlier, Rich, in terms of the averaging. Uh, it would be the average from, uh, the right-hand corner closest to the lake to the left-hand corner closest to the lake. So let's say that's, I don't know, eighteen inches. Uh, you know, it would be an average of nine inches. So it'd be, uh, you know, twenty-five feet above nine inches.
Let me, uh, it was okay, uh, George said toward me and Sarah involvement, but, uh, the Tibido application here is, uh, open to all the planning board members, correct?
I think so.
I mean, not something we dealt at a special meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I got confused.
The other thing I would say is, I guess I'm gonna plan to abstain from this application, cause I have none of the materials in front of me.
Neither do I. They have me a lot that, uh, uh, Mr. uh, Tiro, they're having a lot of communications this week for this meeting tonight, tonight. And, uh, uh, somehow I, myself, I, I backed over in a different place that I don't, I cannot see, I don't, I don't, I didn't see it.
I didn't, I didn't see it come to me either, the, the entire change of the agenda, so.
My apologies, but you, you, we still have three members to take care of.
Yeah, we, so Peter, Pete and I could still vote on this.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'll trust my, my suggestion to the two of you, and, and that is that, um, we, uh, take an average uh, across that lakefront side of the garage and base our twenty-five feet uh, above that average. Mr. Tibido, you look like you've got your hand up there, uh,
No, I guess, as, as again, I'm not on site right now, so based on memory. So if you tell me that if I, um, the garage is twenty-eight feet deep, so from the front corner, I go back fourteen feet. Um, I stand there and for where I stand, the bottom of my feet, that's where twenty-five feet to the ridge maximum height. Do I understand that correctly?
Actually, it, it isn't the midpoint. Um, it's the actual average elevation between, um, from the ground level to, um, the fa- uh, the, uh, base of From the ground level to the the base of of the garage.
So the average from the, so it's the average on the entire twenty eight feet?
Yes.
Okay, so if I measure. So if I use at the driveway, the right side of the garage, the advantage. Because that's level with that driveway. I go to the rear of the garage, find the height of the advantage off grade. Take the average, that's where my starting point is to go, I can go up twenty five feet.
Correct.
And and that's to to the ridge.
Correct.
Okay.
Rich, I know you you have, you're gonna abstain, but did I say anything incorrect?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just double checking, you never know.
Sarah?
Spending my time looking for the application through most of this.
Yeah, just one second before we go any further, I just put the link to to the packet in chat here. Is it if you have the ability to fire up the chat, bring cursor down to the bottom of window, should find chat.
Yeah.
Enable chat and you'll see a panel on the right hand side.
You're a lifesaver.
I I'm hoping it will help us all get there. So while maybe Sarah and Rich are looking for that, I I just had a clarifying question, George. Cause as Mark was talking about where he he gets his average from. That was on the twenty eight foot side, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right, thanks.
Now I got a question. Have we, have we gone to this site?
I have not been there.
I just thinking out loud, you think, I'm not sure which. How far we are into this discussion, not sure, and Mark, I'm new to the board. So I don't know if your case was considered before. So I guess my thought would be just like we did with the feeders, and maybe we should go there and make sure that. You know exactly where to start, I don't know how to get you anybody in tow with it, that would be my thought in it, but. You know, it's up to the board on that.
Yeah, well, I was on the agenda a month or two months ago. But I got pushed aside, obviously due to bright side, so that's why I've been waiting for a couple of months.
Yep. Yep, Sarah, it's it's a fair question to ask about the the process to do a site visit. In this case, I think we we can rely on some some other. I want to call it local experience. Pete Sargent, you happen to know that the lay of the land out there?
Uh, yes, I do.
Um, and I drive by it every day, so I have familiarity with, well, when I would go to work, now I'm just.
And when and when I first started, nothing about it, when I first started this project. I actually, and he's not here tonight, obviously, I met with Gary out there, saying this is what the customer wants to do. Do you see any problem with this? He said, no, not at all, you know, he gave me some some suggestions. As to how to how to tie into the existing subject system and all this stuff, so he said, not a problem, fill out the application, we'll go before the planning board. So Gary has been out there and he didn't see. And I've been doing renovation for these people throughout the past twenty plus years and. Gary has been out there multiple times, I always made sure that I had an okay from at least him personally, so.
Thanks, Mark, that's good, and um, Gary is here, I can see his, at least I believe it's Gary. Memorizing his phone, it's identified as Galaxy S twenty FE five G, so I think that is he.
It's nazi.
He looks kind of, he looks kind of bland.
Yeah.
At least on my phone.
So so I I would just turn to the other board members, do the other board members feel there's some some need to do a site visit in this case? We've identified exactly what we're expecting of Mark, who's representing the Kruegers. Where he would do his app, where he would do his measurements from. And as part of this, these meeting minutes and it's being recorded, so it's not as though it's somehow. Hidden, right?
Yeah.
Yep, so 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 basically, if I if if I start at the driveway and. You know, the advantage elevation at the driveway is zero. And the back of the garage, the advantage elevation is, say, worst case scenario, three feet, then eighteen inches. From the advantage. Is where I start my twenty five feet.
Yes.
Yep.
And then that's I I designed the sidewalls and the trusses accordingly to ensure that the peak is within. There's no more than twenty five feet from that eighteen inch, from from basically eighteen inches below the advantage.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, whatever that average is, that's.
Yep. So besides that, can you see anything else as as far as the permit, as far as. Everything else being okay, again, Gary was out there and he seemed, you know, fine with the project.
Pete. Chairperson. The this average calculation, is that part of the law we're talking about?
It is, it's part of the the ordinance, Rich can explain it better than I can.
Okay, that's what I just want to know that, I just, I wasn't aware of that piece, but okay, so that's in there, okay.
It's in our ordinance and it's also that those definitions. Pretty much follow the state guidelines for shoreline zoning, although as George said earlier. We have to follow our ordinance as it's as it's read.
Okay, all right, so what you're, I just, I'm familiar with the property and what George is suggesting. It makes sense, just work out the numbers and, you know, go work.
Yeah, and I'm looking at what Peter in the chat room and and I'm seeing that. Just for my purposes, if you're looking at the side of the garage. That's what's facing the water, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you're just gonna take the average of the two corners or.
Right.
And then go up twenty five feet.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I I I can see that and agree with it.
Peter, the only things, I these aren't problems, these are just. Items, I think for clarification, we'll need to include as conditions, one would be our standard condition regarding. Stormwater management from the roof. Runoff and the second would be. Although there's no mention, the application is silent on this, but I I think it would be good. Given the history of this issue in Belgrade, that we have a condition that. Makes it clear that. This structure will not include any cooking facilities. And Mr. Thibodeau, this is simply because we've had so much problems with people adding cooking facilities after.
Yeah, no, the the intent of the Kruegers, obviously, they're they're elderly couple. And they they've maintained this properly, really nice, but their kids now have grandkids, so they come up for the summer, enjoy the lake. And they just, you know, the the Kruegers are elderly, they only have one bathroom in the small camp that's existing. And they would just like to have a place for the kids to hang out on rainy days and use the bathroom up there and, you know.
Good, the cooking facilities is a distinguishing feature that we're trying to make very clear.
Oh, yeah.
This time.
That turns it into a second dwelling unit is.
Exactly.
Legal aspect of it.
Totally understand.
Yep, precisely.
And I believe, actually, when I met Gary out there, he he mentioned that fact that.
He's more patiently aware of it than we are.
Just for my benefit, when you guys mentioned a cooking facility. That means a kitchen or that means an outdoor grill?
That's the name of the owners.
Nope. She's asking about the the term kitchen facility.
Oh, kitchen facility, I'm sorry, Sarah, I misunderstood.
You guys call it cooking facility.
Yeah, the. Ordinance uses the term cooking facility, so.
Okay.
Versus kitchen.
Versus kitchen, okay, so it's not, it's not like an outdoor.
No, indoor, indoor, it's not like they couldn't have a grill outside, outside to use or anything like that. It's that they don't have a stove, that they don't have a dishwasher, that they don't have, you know, etc, an oven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Precisely, yeah, good question.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there other questions regarding this particular application before us?
Not for me.
Okay. George, anything?
No, I'm I'm all set.
Sarah, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't, and I I'm caught up, so I'm I'm with it.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And Pete, I see I see you your shoulder and I'm hoping you can still hear us. About this application?
Well, I I'm not able to vote, so you know, you could just say you've covered all the areas and, you know, should be clear.
Why, why can't Pete vote? What are we saying?
I I I wasn't part of the, I think, when at the beginning of the discussion, I think Rich.
No, I I think you're okay on this one, Pete, if you. The other one was Adam's application, which is what I was talking about when I first started and. I was thinking we were dealing with the gardener application and apparently I was wrong.
All right, okay, I'm 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 clear what's going on in this this situation, I can vote then.
Yep, yeah, exactly, but Pete, you and I can't vote on Adams.
On Adams.
Right, because we weren't part of that initial discussion, there was. Rich. George and Sarah that were on that one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, having said all that, I think we have, do we have, I think we have. A direction to go with this particular application for Mark Thibodeau. There are no more questions or no more comments for Mark and Mark, I think nothing else from you, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
So I would entertain a motion on this application for Mark Thibodeau.
Want to go through the findings of fact first or?
Oh, humanity crickets, yeah, we do. Okay, I've got the shoreline zoning findings of fact template, fillable form. Bear with me as I type out as we do this. It's for the shoreline zone permit, so. Mark, what's your address? Well, what's the address of this particular thing again, is it thirty seven? Something Sunfish Lane?
It's twenty four.
Ax map?
On mine, it's not filled out, oh, the old one, it is forty, map forty one lot nine.
Thank you. The applicant. Applicants on date, applied for shoreline permit for, is this. Put a new roof on a garage, is that how it's phrased?
It it's a removed roof of existing garage and add another story. Consisting of family room and small bath.
Thank you, the application was presented. To the planning board, so we need a date, so is that today's date?
Yeah, this is the second time, because this is a revised application. I don't remember the date of the first meeting, no.
We never had a first meeting, I submitted all the paperwork, Gary looked it over, I think a couple of members looked it over. Noticed that I needed some more information, so I I provided that information back to Gary. And again, I was on the agenda a few months ago, but got got pushed off. So this is the first meeting that we're having on this.
We did take it up, it's and and recognize there was additional information needed. So I I think we need to recognize that we did, you weren't present, Mr. Thibodeau, but. And I know that much, but I I don't remember the date of that first.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
Um, just one second, so. I'm gonna estimate that it was March fourth, because I know I had weighed in on a. In an email where I was looking for some information on March third, which is a Wednesday.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, you're, I I think that's, I think you're you're right, Peter.
So if it's okay with everybody, I'm gonna indicate originally taken up on. March third.
Actually, be the fourth.
I'm sorry, fourth. Okay, so I said originally taken up March fourth, two thousand twenty one and May sixth, two thousand twenty one. Okay. Okay, so we're going through the conclusions of law based on the application materials. Testimony, statements and evidence, documents and other materials submitted. To it, and the above findings of fact, the Belgrade Planning Board finds that the project is or is not permitted. So we have to go through. Numbers one through seven, I think are relatively simple votes, number eight has got a lot to it in and by itself. So we'll do a roll call after each one, after each item. So we're talking about. Under section fourteen, table one of the ordinance, and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions. Sixteen D of the ordinance, number one, that it will maintain. Helpful, safe and helpful conditions. Um, now, before we go very far. Language, George, that we have used. Based on.
Material submissions and the public record.
Okay, based on application submissions in the public record, so so that number one will maintain safe and helpful conditions. I have vote, so we can all vote in favor of this, sure, Rich?
Uh, yes, I initially said I was gonna abstain, but I read, looked at the application enough to say yes.
Thank you, so that's one, George.
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Just just for, I'm not sure if I can vote or not, because the first time that I was considered, I was not in.
Good point. I think it's, I think, I think it's fair to say that if you do not feel comfortable voting, because the first time we even took it up, although it was brief. You weren't part of that original discussion, if you feel better not to participate, then that's fine.
Yeah, I I will I will step out just to keep keep the record clean.
Okay, so we've got, so one, two, three in favor, and I am also in favor, so that's four in favor. I think I'm gonna say. The board feels okay, say. In favor and one abstain, would that be appropriate in this case, because we're doing so? Okay, so. Okay. Number two, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters, by a vote, the standard was met. So, Rich?
Yes.
And George?
Yes. Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Sarah, you're abstaining. Yes, so that's 4 and 1, 4 in favor, 1 abstain. Then, based on the same language. Based on application submittals in the public record. Number 3, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. I vote, the board found the standard was met based on. So to me, it feels like it's a non-applicable, or, no, that's not right, they are having a bathroom, so. Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm in favor also, and Sarah abstain. 4, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By a vote, the board found the standard was met based on. Rich, you'll be right back, I guess. To George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm in favor of that as well. Rich, we're voting on that the application as proposed will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
Yes.
So that's 4 in favor, 1 abstain. Number 5, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote, the board found the standard was met based on. Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it too, and Sarah abstain. Number 6, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. Is this applicable?
Well, there are none on this site that are identified in the comprehensive plan. But it consequently meets the standard.
Yeah, it's an interesting thing, so since it, I think the standard is, it is worthy of a vote then.
Yeah, either way, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Number 7, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. Based on a vote, the board found the standard was met based on. So Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well, so that's 4 in favor, 1 abstain. Number 8 is in conformance with the provisions of section 15 land use standards. This is where we have a number of standards to go through, please bear with it, with us as we go through this. So minimum lot standards. That would be language we would use there would be for the based on applications to middle and public record. Georgia, is that correct? I mean, is?
Yes, I, I think so. I think that's a good way to go.
Okay, S A, B, principal and accessory structures, we did, we did talk about this, I think. Are we in agreement that that too is the same thing, that it's based on application submittals in the public record?
I believe so.
C, campgrounds.
Not applicable.
Individual private camp sites.
Not applicable.
Commercial and industrial uses.
Any.
Parking areas.
Any.
Roads and driveways.
Any.
Signs.
Any.
Stormwater runoff.
I think here we need to note it will be met with, based on inclusion of a condition.
It would be met based on the inclusion of a condition.
Thibodeau, we can explain that once we get to the end of this, more what that means, okay, so you're not in the dark.
Yep.
J, septic waste disposal systems. Based on application submittals and public record, we saw all that information. K, essential services.
Any.
Mineral and exploration and extraction.
Any.
Agriculture.
Any.
Timber harvesting.
Any.
Clearing or removal of vegetation and activities other than timber harvesting.
I believe that's any as well.
Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal.
Any.
Exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements.
Believe that's any.
Re-vegetation requirements.
Any.
Erosion and sedimentation control.
I guess, I think that's any, isn't it, since there's no earthwork?
I would say so.
I would say so too.
I guess the only earthwork would be, is I believe the owner's gonna have hollow well tie the bathroom into the existing, you know, pump, which pumps into the existing field. And I guess I would, I would rely on him to make sure, ensure erosion and precautions, I'm assuming he knows what to do, you know?
Good point. Is he a certified contractor? I believe he is, isn't he?
I, I believe he's the one who put the field in initially, you know, based on the plans by A. Hodgson, so.
So.
That's, that, can I interject for a second? That's Ricky Deemer runs the business now, you know, he still called that name. And Ricky is, I'm 99% sure, he's got a number, he's, he's certified.
I see him all, I see the trucks all over Belgrade.
Yeah, actually, there's some soil erosion control measures included in the subsurface wastewater disposal system application. So I think we're safe to conclude that.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, that, there's soil erosions being provided for.
Okay, thank you. T, shoreline stabilization.
Any.
Soils.
Yeah, we have the soils report, so.
Based on submittals?
Yeah.
Water quality.
Based on some mills.
Historical and archaeological sites.
Same.
Resource protection.
Any.
Then we're through that part, then we're onto the conditions area, where says, conditions of approval needed to be met, required. Needed to meet, I'm sorry, required Belgrade shoreline zone ordinance findings in section 16D. So this is a standing condition that would apply unless it's deemed unnecessary. Managed stormwater runoff from new or expanded structures in accordance with section 15I of the Belgrade Shoreland Zone Ordinance and DEP's best management practices as outlined in conservation practices for the homeowners publication, such measures that can be put in place prior to building use.
So, Mr. Thibodeau, the I, I think that something has changed on this, but the there, that document from DEP gives you a number of options, one of which is to do a drip line infiltration trench, which seems to be very popular to receive the stormwater coming off the roof and infiltrating to the ground rather than running overland and eventually making its way to the lake. But there are, there are other options in there, any which, any of which are fair game. I don't know if this has been implemented or not, but we got a email from the town manager this past week. It used to be that they'd send that, that document out with the permit at the town office, but now I think they're sending a link to the document on the DEP website.
Okay.
It, it's a pretty user-friendly document.
Okay, so, so when I receive the building permit in the mail, I'll, I'll also receive that link.
Yes.
Good, good.
So we, one of our conditions of approval is the managing stormwater runoff. There's I know where there's gonna be one. Cooking facilities.
Oh, you want me to give you a wording is now appropriate time, Peter?
I think so, if you, if you are ready.
Yeah, so I, you know, this is open to editing, of course, but proposed construction and use shall not include cooking facilities.
I wrote, proposed construction and use shall not include cooking facilities.
Yes.
Um, so first to the planning board members, Sarah in particular, did that make sense as we talked about this?
It does.
Okay. Um, and so for everybody's awareness, what this does is outlines the fact that cooking facilities would not be part of this construction. And Mark, you heard us as we talked about this before, so does this make sense to you?
Yeah, totally.
Okay, great. Are there any other conditions? I can think of none. The only thing I would want to ask is, does the application have a or there need to have a DP certified contractor's number on it? If we think that it does and we don't have that information, that would be a condition.
It doesn't.
Okay.
Make a motion that the of the application is also contingent upon providing the DEP certified contractor number to Gary before work begins.
Okay.
To the code officer.
Yep, thank you. So we've got a motion on the floor, I think, to include that wording as a condition that we would put in here, so. Rich made a motion to include this condition. I would, is there a second?
I'll second.
First motion and second, any more discussion on the inclusion of that condition? So this is to include that condition as part of this, right, what we're voting on. Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm in favor and I guess, Sarah, you'd abstain? Okay. Alright, so Rich, I'll put down, I'll try to write it the way you, you said it, so that was to to provide the DEP certified contractor number to the CEO.
Yep.
Prior to.
Construction.
Okay, so it reads, to provide the DEP certified contractor number, the CEO, prior to the startup construction. Okay, great. So that, so we have three conditions. We're at just decision, so based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law. I guess this is where we would vote, right? So I think we're at that point. So all those in favor, so, Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, and Sarah, you abstain? Okay. Great. Alright, I'm gonna save this and send it to I'll send it off to Julie here in a little while. Okay. Great. Part's done. So, Mark, this is passed, it'll get mailed to you.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your patience, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep.
Thanks.
Nice seeing all of you.
Good seeing you too, Mark.
Have a happy summer.
You too.
So getting back to the agenda. I think it's high time we take up Adams, right?
Yeah.
And Adam, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no worries.
So for Pete and myself, we were not part of that original discussion, so we would abstain. We can observe what's going on, but we would not be voting in this case. So, Rich, if you wanna, I guess, go from here, I can help weigh in if you want me to do something.
Well, I would say that when we get to the, the paperwork part of it, if you have the ability to do that, I don't have any of that in front of me in terms of the voting and stuff, so.
You bet, I'm your guy.
Okay, well.
I'd be doing it by hand.
Which he has done before. So as I mentioned earlier, Adam's application was before us at our special meeting that only Sarah, George, and I were at attended. And we went through the application and there were, I think, three things that needed clarification or completion, if you will, and one of them was the septic system permit material. And another one was a certified contractor number, and since then, Adam has amended the application to include these materials, so I, I think those are taken care of. The only other issue is the height of the structure, which Adam was gonna go back and modify or at least provide us with information to convince us or convince isn't the word, but to show that the structure will be twenty-five feet or less and I would say that my reading of the, the amended or new application, modified application, whatever we call it, I still don't know that it's gonna be twenty-five feet or less, so. My thinking is if George or Sarah have anything to say regarding the application, we'll then if, if they don't or do afterward, we'll turn it over to Adam to present us the height issue. George?
Well, like you, I'm uncertain as to, one, whether the height was measured at the closest point to the lake. It appears from the new drawing that you submitted with the elevations on it, Adam, that it certainly is twenty-five feet from the, at the foundation to the peak. If I'm reading this correctly. But, um. The question is, is it twenty-five feet from the base of the, 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 the foundation? Where the pilings for the deck go into the ground to the peak, what's that? What's that height? From, from these numbers, if I'm again reading these correctly, I, I can't tell. I, I see that the building's been sunk five feet into the ground based on the elevations, but I still can't figure out what that height is at the lakeside.
Um, yeah, so we did it actually from the foundation itself, but just a technicality question would be if you're from the pilings of the deck or the front of the deck?
Uh, I'm
You said, you said pilings and I typically said I'm back in a couple feet and the only reason I'm asking is that makes a difference.
Oh. I, I, I guess I meant the front of the deck.
Okay.
I believe that's
There, okay, so, correct, so that's from the Asher Foundation, working with Andy Dunbar, who also works with Elliot Thayer or is business partners and that's the interpretation they got. So if we're gonna go to the front of the deck, we're talking about a foot to maybe a foot and a half. So all I'll do is I'll push the house another foot, a foot and a half into the ground. I have enough slope from the front of my house, I'm pretty much gonna excavate everything in front of it out to the hundred foot mark. And unfortunately, I think this is what you're gonna see in a lot of the places, that the twenty-five foot mark, i- it's gonna, it used to be thirty-five, you know, they changed it when they revised it, it's really gonna do more harm than good. Because all we're gonna do is we're just gonna take these buildings and we're just gonna push them down, sits from original grade and we're just gonna excavate out so we can get, you know, our daylight or our slope. And we'll just push them back a little bit from the hundred foot, so all I'll do is we'll keep the same measurements everywhere, other than that five foot is gonna go to six or six and a half, whatever Andy Dunbar shoots that to be, it looks like one side's about a foot, a foot and a half and then the other side's a little bit, a foot, a foot three quarters, so we'll push it down to six, six and a half feet and that'd be our go point from there. For twenty-five feet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Just a point of interest, I think with what Mr. Gardner's proposing, it will, it will go. But it's, it's, it's interesting that he, the point that he brought on, the fact that what people are gonna do if, if, if we're mission from the front land of the closest point to the lake. Where the structure starts on the outside. Then we're gonna have construction. So from that level down and, and if, if there would be a basement that is twenty feet down to the ground, that doesn't count. Is what I'm getting, I'm just thinking this aloud and how our, our properties along the lake eventually are gonna look like or might end up looking like. So, um. So that's what we're saying, that as long as we measure from the outside level closest to the lake, from there is twenty feet up, or what can be seen above ground. What is underneath ground, we don't care.
Right, right. And you did say twenty feet, but I think you just missed
I mean, I mean, I meant twenty-five feet, yes, you're right.
Okay. But yeah, I think you've got
Get me on my toes, Rich.
I just checking on, make sure you know. So
Go ahead.
Okay, um, no, good, you go, Sarah, if you have any.
Yes, I just, uh, just saying that. I don't know of anybody that will make it a ten or two stories down basement in front of the lake. Sure, but it's just, I don't know, it's just food for thought, it's just, that's all, I don't know if we, we, we gotta add in the ordinance something different or, or something to that fact that no more than one story underneath ground in front of the lake, I just, just thinking aloud, it's sounding myself out to you guys, that's all. This is, this is what kind of a food for thought to the, to the board and it's just a just a recap of the ordinance as it is, and as long as it's in the outside in the view, as long as we only have to measure from the closest point to the lake where the structure is visible, from that point to the top is twenty-five feet, as long as that, that's done. It doesn't matter, I guess, at this point, how deep beyond that point the structure is, as long as it's not visible outside.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna see people building two stories underground. But, yeah.
You are not being in Puerto Rico.
Yeah, it's gonna be called a pool.
Yeah. All right. Now, as far as the application is concerned, I, I see one condition and again, that's the DEP best management practices for controlling stormwater. Anybody else?
I'm not sure that's gonna be needed, Rich, because Adam's already included a drip line infiltration trench.
Okay, all right, yep.
Um, I do have two other questions though, if I may. The, Adam, on the front page, and you provided the, and number nine, what is the total area of cleared openings? And listed five thousand feet. In the newest drawing that you provided, and I assume Andy Dunbar did this, it listed at six thousand square feet.
Yeah, Andy gave me both of those numbers, so that's a really good question on which one it actually is. Cause I ought to do twenty-five percent about an acre. I would guess it's the six thousand square feet when you put it on the actual survey itself.
Okay. Um, and the other thing, invisible, I guess, maybe I, I don't, I, maybe I didn't print out the whole submission. I have the shore site evaluation report from Ken Stratton, but I don't have Gary's permit.
I signed the copy I submitted.
Okay, thank you.
It hasn't been installed yet, so.
Right.
It wouldn't be an actual, yeah, so the one that I'm looking at shows Gary's signature on it as
I probably just missed it.
Yeah, top right, it's not in the ground, so it wouldn't be an actual, you know, signed off septic until I go out there and put it in, but I don't wanna do any work until I have the rest of my permits together.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Those are the questions the three of us have at this point. And if so, I guess I would ask Peter to run us through the now the findings of fact material.
Sure, before we start that, I, I guess I have a question for you, Rich, and for Sarah. Do you feel a condition is needed regarding the maximum height of the building or we didn't do that with Mr. Tibbetto, I'm not sure it's needed here, I think we're of a common understanding. But that's just my own feeling.
My thinking is that the record would show very clearly that we discussed this with Adam and that it's kind of like, no. Doesn't need to be said again, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, great, we'll, we'll, we'll go through this and so just to be clear, so a, or is three for our planning board and the three voting members that can vote are the people who were in attendance to that meeting, so that would be Rich, George and Sarah. So neither Pete, Sergeant, nor myself could vote on this, on this at all. So we'll, we'll go through it though. Just wanna make sure we stated that upfront. So I started filling some of this stuff out already, just to make, get some of the stuff out of the way, so. This is the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Applicat, I put down was Kular Real Estate Holdings, which is in the applicant, applicant section of the application. Um, I used the address three seventeen Wanser Lane, which is the property of this particular application. And I said, the applications on the date applied for a shoreline permit for a new year-round house. The application was presented to the planning board on today's date. So that's finding is fact stuff, then we get into conclusions of law.
So Peter, if I may, the first time we took this up was March thirtieth.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So it's been twice now.
Thank you. Great, great point. Okay, so then we're into number one, will maintain safe, safe and helpful conditions. So I'll do the roll call vote and I'll count them up, and then I've already started to put in the standard language, which is based on application submittals and public record in a number of these already, so. So this is for help, safe and helpful conditions, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just copying it so I can use that same language for indicating three in favor and none opposed. Onto number two, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters that the board found the standard was met based on submittals and public records, so, oh, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
So that'd be three in favor and none opposed. Three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. Board found this standard was met. So Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you, that's three in favor, none opposed. Four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. By a vote, the board found the standard was met based on application submittals and public records, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
Three in favor, none opposed. Five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points as, as well as actual points of access to inland waters, so by a vote, the board found this standard was met based on submittals and public records, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Three in favor, none opposed. Six, will protect archaeological and historic sources designated in the comprehensive plan. Board found this standard was met based on application submittals and public record, so Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Three in favor and none opposed. Seven, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. The board, by a vote, the board found this standard was met based on application submittals and public record. So Rich?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
That'd be three in favor and none opposed, onto number eight. This is where we look at land use standards from section fifteen. First, minimum lot size, I'm sorry, minimum lot standards. Is it the same thing of based on application submittals and public record?
Yeah.
Uh, B, principal and accessory structures. Same?
Same.
C, campgrounds.
NA.
Uh, D, individual private camp sites.
NA.
Commercial and industrial uses.
NA.
Parking areas.
Repeat the basis statement.
Okay. Uh, roads and driveways.
Ditto.
Signs.
NA.
Stormwater runoff.
Um, standard language.
And thank you, Adam, for including that, including that already, that's good. Uh, J, septic waste disposal systems.
Ditto.
K, essential services.
NA.
Uh, mineral and exploration and extraction.
NA.
Agriculture.
NA.
Timber harvesting and land management roads.
NA.
Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
The standard language.
P, hazard trees, storm damaged trees and dead tree removal.
I think this is NA.
Yeah, I would agree.
Q, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements.
NA, I guess, because there's no exemptions being that requested.
Right. Revegetation requirements.
NA.
Erosion and sedimentation control.
Standard basis statement.
Yep. T, shoreline stabilization.
NA.
Soils.
The standard language, the standard basis language.
Water quality.
Ditto.
Historical and archaeological sites.
Ditto.
Resource protection.
NA.
Okay. Conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade ordinance findings of fact. Our standard language includes the stormwater runoff. That's under number one. Is. For this one.
I personally would suggest that that could be deleted simply because Adam's already provided for that in his site drawing.
Yep. Okay. Let's see if I can get rid of it. Allowed me to redline it.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Are there any other? Conditions of approval needed.
I don't think we have any.
So.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Can I, I just want to recap here. So I had this file go in my mind. So originally when, and this kind of going back above what we're doing. Originally, we, we talk about from the backside of the house, it was about 21 feet in height. It was initial 17 and then the, from the top of the roof to the side of the, of the, of the roof, where the roof ends. That was not a measurement there, but somebody, as I remember, somebody said it was about four feet. So we, in the back of the house, we had about 20, 20, 21.5 feet in the back. And then that line went all the way to the front of the, of the house that goes to a lake with an open basement. And that line measured nine feet from that baseline to that dam. So I guess we, in total, we were talking about the height, the total height from the front of the house. Closest to the, to the lake, to the tip of it originally was 30.5 feet. Is that correct?
It was originally higher than 25, but he's putting it.
It was 30.5 feet total. So I guess when, when, when I'm trying to get at, Adam explained very well that he's going to be sinking this basement in. So the basement's going to have to be sink in at least five point feet under the ground.
I think he was talking about like six or six and a half feet when he was discussing it with us. So.
Okay. I just, I just, I just taking my own notes here and I just want to make sure that that's it, that's the case.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sarah, it's a great question. And Adam, thank you for talking that out with us. Because it's, it's always good for us to know what's being presented, what's being asked and being clear on this. So thanks. We were at the conditions of approval. We had basically realized that Adam had already provided information. So there's no need for the standard language for condition of approval. Number one, about managing stormwater runoff. And I think in our earlier discussions, we had seen that the DEP certified contractor number was provided. That's on there. So that would not be a condition of approval at this case. Are there any other? Items here?
Not on my end.
All right.
Okay. So having gone through that. So I think it's time for a vote. So I can't, neither Pete nor I can vote. So I would ask for a vote of approval from the planning board, the quorum that's here. So Rich.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So by a vote of three in favor. None opposed. The motion passes. So Adam will be, the permit will be mailed to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for your. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your, your patience in getting through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks. I'm just filling in some language at the bottom here. To be consistent with the top of it. Okay.
Thanks for doing that, Peter. I was going to take the, I've had to do this in, in the others. And I've taken the Luddite approach of doing it by hand and, and scanning it and then sending it in.
I, I, I must admit, copy and paste is, is very helpful.
Yes. Where would we be without it?
Yeah. All right. And I think Katie, I think we're, we're to your application.
Yay, finally.
Thank you so much for your patience as we went through some other applications.
No worries. I learned a lot.
Did you? Okay.
Watching PBS, isn't it? Maybe not.
And Peter, I think you worked with my partner, Corey Nash, at the stage.
Yeah.
But yeah, he heard, he recognized your voice and he came over and peeped. He said, yeah, I used to work with him.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
World. Yes.
Perfect. Yay. Hi.
I'll let him know. Hi. I made him leave the room. He was distracted.
Finished. All right, cool beans. All right. So.
New to all of this and you're just going to have to advise and direct me at every turn here.
I think we'll be able to do that. We'll probably have some questions and we'll have two things to talk about. But just want to make sure that we, we are all, all clear on, on this. So. For our old business, we've taken care of items A and C. Are we, we, for the sake of Katie being here and Elliot is not, we're not, are we not going to discuss the? Peter, application tonight, is that correct?
He wants to, based on our, the outcome of our discussion earlier about maximum height. He was anticipating he was going to redesign that.
Okay, makes good sense. I just wanted to make sure we said it out loud so that there's no. Fear of just ignoring it's on the agenda.
He was pretty certain he wouldn't be able to get it done by, in time to get it on tonight's agenda.
Okay. All right. Awesome. All right. So we're on to Katie's application. So let's get to it. And someone had, had someone been able to look at this for completeness, I think.
I did. The town manager did just call me the other day and told me what I needed to do. Did the best I could without hiring somebody to do the site plan. And I emailed him a waiver for a lot of the things that were requested. So I am not changing anything to the outside of the structure. So he thought waivers would be fine, but you can let me know as we, as we move along.
Okay. Metal.
That waiver is included in, in an email.
Yeah.
dated May 3rd to Anthony. And it. And there's a, you know, there's about seven, eight items on it.
Right.
I was just following Anthony's suggestion of how to, how to manage the application.
Yep. Yep. Very good. All right. Thank you. Pardon me. I'm at a slight disadvantage. Look, just a slight one. I guess I'd turn to the board members and help advise on the best way to do this. So I'm operating in a digital world here with a PDF where I typically would go through a checklist, right? And see what's available. I don't have a good way to write on something right now, which is a little ironic.
Do you want me to do it the Luddite way?
Have you got this printed?
Yeah, I mean, I could, you know, like we did, right side, I guess. I could, you know, just, I have the form that is included as part of the application. I could just take notes as we go through this.
If, if you don't mind, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, no, I, I'd be happy to do it. I'm. Just, so you go by Catherine or Kate?
Kate or Katie. My family calls me Katie. So I feel like Peter and I are related now.
So if, probably what we'll have to do is we'll have to scan and, and send this to Kate. So she has some record of.
I'll take my own notes too, for what you tell me I need to do going forward.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, great. So, so just, just to kind of do a quick review. So what we're going to do is we're going down to the checklist. And what we would do is go through that checklist. And if something is complete, we'll indicate it. If something is missing or a waiver has been requested, we can indicate that. This is where some gap will surface and we'll say, oh, you know, we, we might need this or that or whatever. So that's what we'd be at this point. Okay.
Yeah.
On the application package, I'm on page 72 of 94. Where that checklist is from the online package that was available. Sarah, I mentioned that just to help get it to the same spot.
Okay.
You're on mute. I'm sorry. Couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. You waiting for me?
No.
I'm sorry, Pete. I just educated that. This is my first commercial application. So I'm learning as much, almost as much as she is in this process.
Too. Yeah.
Okay. So, so, so I just want to make sure we're all at the same spot and have the expectation of how to proceed. That's all. So, okay, George, we ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Do you want me to read these out or are you, are you going to do that?
Doesn't, doesn't matter. Do you feel, if you feel comfy is if you're writing and reading, do you feel good that?
Yeah, no, I can, I can do that. I just can't chew gum as well.
Okay.
So the first item on the checklist is the application form. Which I believe we have.
We, we do have that.
Yeah, there are a few minor things I think missing or that need clarification, but we can get back to that.
Yep.
So I'll mark that as complete. The applicant's agent authorization letter, that's not applicable, I don't believe.
I would agree.
Copy of deed, option, sale agreement, lease or other documentation of title right or interest that's been included. Written waiver request. We also have that.
We do.
We'll get back to that. Copy of tax map of property. Somebody will have to help me with this. I can't remember.
I don't think the tax map is there. I may be wrong.
Standby.
So it's a silly question. What is a tax map?
Yeah, I'm wondering the same thing. I'm like, don't you guys have that?
It's located at the town office. And it basically shows all the properties in town. There's a bunch of maps. And you get to find the right map number and then the lot number, whatever.
Actually, it's also available online on the town's website.
It is, which is very helpful.
And so I need to provide this?
Yep. The idea is you, you would, an applicant would provide that and point to that particular lot on that map, tax map. Say, this is what we're doing. This is where it's happening.
Okay, so the, the address doesn't help. The 11 School Street or the?
You know, honestly.
Different map for you to have in front of you when you're referring to the application.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I need to get a copy of that.
Sometimes change with time, but the lot number does not, since it's in the registry of deeds.
Okay, this, we're talking about the old schoolhouse, which then was the health center, which was then abandoned for years. So nothing's changed, but I can get whatever you're requesting.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, George was saying like the street address can change. Like our house that we bought, we bought, we haven't moved, but the address has changed. But the tax map is the same.
Okay, so I'll get that for you. Okay.
Next item is the Canterbury County soils map. And that's the, waiver's been requested for that. So we'll set that aside for now. Till we can get, deal with the waivers. Copy of the US Geological Survey Topographical Map showing the property location.
I don't think we've seen that, have we?
I thought that was part of the waivers, but I, tell me where to get it, I will get it or, or ask for a waiver. I'm not sure what I should be asking for a waiver for or not. I'm not changing anything to the outside. So. You can point me in the right direction here.
Surely.
Yeah.
The history of the lot, the new lot was created. I know you guys are familiar with Sean and the boat, the boat. So that new lot was created, I think he, out of that piece that Mark Berry and Sean owned, I think together. So the, the schoolhouse sat on a smaller lot, but they carved out a bigger chunk of land behind it to attach to the schoolhouse. So there is a new lot that was created. The rest of that land back there is attached, I think, to Sean's property or Mark Berry's still.
So Kate, if you go to. After the signature page of the application, there's a list of links and websites where you can, where different maps are available. And there's one for the US Geological Survey that you can go to and, and get a topographical, get a.
Map? Okay.
Yeah. You, you don't need the whole quadrangle or anything like that. All we really need is the sort of the locus of, of your site. And I mean, the fact of the matter is, most of us are familiar enough, we know where it is on the ground. But just to be consistent with what we require from everybody else.
Sure.
Anyway, that, and that's true for some of the other submissions, but most of those you've requested a waiver. So.
Would, is this something I could request a waiver for or it's something that's needed?
I think it's so basic that I, I think it's my personal opinion, I can't speak for the other board members, is that we should, really should have it. Some of the other items I understand better, given what you're proposing, but.
Okay.
I, I would agree from, from my perspective.
Okay, so two things to get the tax map and the topographical map so far.
Yes.
The next item is copy of Belgrade shoreline zoning map. I can't remember. Maybe this is on your list of waiver requests.
I only asked for waivers for what Anthony had told me to ask for waivers for. Whatever was specified in an email that he sent me. And that's, I think, included with what you have in the waivers attached to the email.
Okay.
Is this something that you would need? It's not on the, on the water.
Yeah, right. I don't know that it's in shoreline zone either, but.
I'm sure it's not.
What are the other board members do?
I think we could almost call that as NA. It's not within probably a thousand feet of the shoreline zone.
Right. That's a good point, Rich.
Yeah. Yeah, NA would be all right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with NA based on. I'm, I'm good with NA based on that information.
Yeah. I just remember this was an issue with the, with bright side, but part of that property was bisected by the shoreline zone.
Yeah.
Next item is a copy of flood insurance map showing property. And that, a waiver's been requested of that. So we'll get back to that. National Wetlands Inventory Map, that waiver's been requested of that. Uh, copy of Maine Geological Survey Significant Sand and Gravel Aquifer Map, showing location, um. Actually, that, that's NA because, um, I, I, is my guess, because that only comes into play if somebody's gonna be storing hazardous materials or petroleum products.
I agree.
I would agree.
Okay. Copy of Maine Drinking Water Program Map of Public Drinking Water Supply Showing Property Location. That's the same. That's, should be not applicable, cuz there's no uh, hazardous materials or hazardous substances or petroleum being stored or used.
Good with that.
Copy of MDOT Highway Entrance or Access Permit. It's a town road, so that's NA. Getting any of these wrong.
That's School Street, right? We're talking about?
Yeah, it's School Street, rather, rather than twenty-seven.
Yep.
Uh, copy of MDOT Traffic Movement Permit and Traffic Movement Study, same NA. Copies of other required state or local permits. I didn't see any, but I don't know of what other state permits could pop, what state permits could be possibly required. And I don't believe any other, other town permits are required here. You, you're not replacing the septic system, right?
No.
Okay.
Really, I'm, I, it doesn't matter, but yeah, no.
Yeah.
No.
Got a quick question here. So, but you, you are, this, this is gonna be like a, like a classroom or something. Or some sort.
The building, that, I was just gonna actually do a quick, like, history of what I've, what I'm thinking of doing. If the application goes through, the building was, has sat abandoned for how long has the new health center been down there? Around fifteen plus years?
Yeah.
And, um, I was starting this project with my sister, so that when she was here, she had a residential space to be living in. Um, so when she's here, she'll, she'll use it. She, she's no longer doing it with me as a partnership. But she'll still be coming to visit family and friends, whoever wants to use that space. I'm guess, guesstimating two-thirds as residential. Originally was thinking the whole thing residential, but it's a huge space. It's twenty-five hundred square feet. So as I was taking down the, all of the separate partitions for little doctors' offices and walls, it, it kind of started to feel like an overwhelmingly large space for a two-bedroom septic. And since the building has always been a public gathering space between the schoolhouse and the health center, I felt like it could be a really cool give back to the community to have that partial part of it be used, um, as a classroom in keeping with the schoolhouse tradition. And my hope would be that when, when I don't have family and friends there, I would rent it out and that the rental part would really subsidize the mortgage. Um, and that the classroom space would be a really low-cost option for anybody in town who wanted to share their knowledge, teach. Um, if they were making money off of using the classroom space, I would charge them. I, I'm not sure the business model yet, like fifty dollars or like a, a, a small fee. If it was just for a gathering space, like a book club or something that they weren't making money, I would just let people use the space. So I've already spoken with Oliver and friends, and she wants to do maybe some book clubs with authors. She doesn't have the room there. So this is just such a huge building and I don't need it all for residential. That's what gave me the idea of the commercial space. Um, because it's been commercial for years. Um, and then also trying to be a smart, uh, business person, which I'm really just a normal person and not a business person, resale, I feel like it's probably better to keep it commercial. Cuz I don't know if you lose some of the commercial license if you, if you don't ever use it. So if I switched it to residential, would it change my ability to sell it in the future if I get, you know, as I get older and more tired? So I'm really just looking for this classroom space to be a give back, to share with the community. And I would charge a small fee to use it. Um, my plan is to have a handicap bathroom in that space and to have a ramp access. It will have a separate doorway entrance than the rest of the building. I've already spoken with the neighbor, Maureen, who's also an author, so she really loved some of these ideas. Um, and that's kind of where I'm sitting right now with, with how I'm planning on using the space. But I don't want to start doing any of the renovation until I get this approval. Also, I would consider, depending upon the cost and the hoops I'd have to jump through, doing a small um, catering, commercial kitchen in that space, so that people could teach some cooking classes, how to can food safely, how to make fiddleheads, like very mean sharing education um, and knowledge with, with our neighbors. So that, that's kind of like the idea behind it. How I go about doing it, you guys can help me jump through the hoops of the application and what I need to do. So that's the history of the building and of my idea.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I had no idea. It'd been abandoned since it was the, um, old health center.
Well, it's been occupied by mice, bats, uh, where a whole, whole source of animals.
Human occupation I'm talking about here. Not the animal kingdom.
Yeah.
The rest of the animal kingdom.
A pretty, pretty rough rehab, but we're wearing a lot of masks. I'm not worried about coronavirus. I'm worried about that hanta, hantavirus, whatever the ma- mouse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So copies of other required state and local permits, I think that's not applicable myself.
I can't think of any, you know, based on what's being presented to us and.
So, uh, I would have thought that maybe, I don't know, this is very interesting what you're bringing into the community. Uh, I'm not sure if you wanna, if he decides to be like a nonprofit. How's all this under a nonprofit will be there, extra permits? I just, I'm asking, I don't know.
Well, there might be profit when I'm having a small rental fee, and I don't know what hoops I'd have to jump through to be a nonprofit.
Traditionally, those kinds of approvals, like, um, for an eatery, you know, haven't been our concern. Um, others should weigh in here. It's been more, are there per, other permits require, are there permits required from DEP, for example, because there's an air emission or because it triggers the state law for stormwater management or, um, and with regard to local permits, the one, uh, the one that most or local ordinances, other local ordinances, the one that comes up the most is, does it meet the minimum lot size, uh, ordinance? Um, Sarah, it potentially, in some circumstance, not this one, it could be, you know, a part of a subdivision, but um, it's mostly been those kinds of issues rather than, you know, has somebody gotten the necessary permits from DHHS for, uh, a restaurant, for example?
My understanding is parking is always the biggest issue.
Parking in the village is a
Yeah.
A big issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I would want to weigh in and just, uh, agree with what George has stated, because that, that's been our mindset so far. Um, and unless I'm missing something in the, in the current shoreline, I'm sorry, Commercial Development Review Ordinance, uh, that would be our strategy, would be to look for sort of like facilities and, um, related to the structure itself as, as a commercial entity in that location. Permits related to that, that's what we'd be looking for. So, a- another example might be if it was something we're in the shoreline zone, you know, there, there might be some sort of shoreline zoning permit. Not in this case, right? Cuz it's like, more than, we're, we're thinking at least more than a thousand feet back, so. So anyway, that was all I wanted to say. Does that help answer your question, Sarah?
Oh, yes, it does, very much.
So the next item is a, uh, twenty-four by thirty-six site development plan drawn scale showing at minimum the following. Um, and there's the long list of items, scale, north arrow, parcel boundaries, location and dimensions of existing proposed building structures, drainage features, signs, fencing, exterior lights, and the list goes on.
My best.
What's that?
I did my best. That was.
Yeah, well, and so what we have is, we have a series of drawings, uh, of three, maybe four drawings. Uh, actually, I was pretty impressed with the drawing you did on the graph paper. Uh, I know, I, I know I couldn't do as well.
I had to call my daughter, who's a math teacher, and just say, please help me. I have no idea where to start.
Uh, so anyway, we have the drawing that was done on graph paper, um, with the caveat that I'm not a licensed surveyor or site planner with a smiley face. And, uh, of, um, uh, one squared equals ten feet. And that has a lot of features on it, uh, including the existing structure, the existing parking, the lich field, uh, the property lines. For some reason, when I, 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 this must have happened when, um, it got scanned. Mine is like a double mirror image, um.
Yeah. Same thing, George.
Yeah, okay, um. Yeah, no, this is.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I think that happened when it got scanned and sent to us, but, um, that's okay. Um, it shows the area that's wooded and I presume will remain wooded.
Yes.
Uh, shows the church, uh, hello, goodbye, the physical therapy school street. Then we have another drawing that, uh, clearly was one as a part of a land survey with meets and bounds. Uh, which is that drawing, uh, these are obviously not twenty-four by thirty-six, but eight and a half by eleven, but, um, and then we also have two drawings of, um, this one would show the interior of the building as well as the parking area. And we have an other drawing, well, actually, we got one that's just the interior. So I'm off, it's five drawings that we got.
So just so you know, George, the application package that, that was on the website, I'm not seeing all those drawings. I'm seeing some of them, you know, and I, I believe that they are all part of what the town has. But the package that was produced, that produced the big ninety-four-page PDF, doesn't include all of those.
Though I, all I did was, I mean, I'm a pa- paper person, uh, so I can look at things repeatedly, but, uh, I just printed it out, you know, from what we were sent by Sheila. The last drawing shows the proposed parking, which includes the existing lot and then
Yeah, we got that.
Along the, uh, School Street. So I think the question becomes in some, do we have the essential parts of a site development plan despite the fact that it's not necessarily twenty-four by thirty-six?
There is a twenty-four by thirty-six that was submitted to the town.
Oh, okay.
They have that. The, the photo that you have of the graph paper one?
Yeah.
Is me actually taking a picture of that twenty-four by thirty-six graph with my phone. And then she, we printed it from there. So they have that. I didn't know how to make a copy of twenty-four by thirty-six. I taped together graph paper.
Yeah.
Talking, I did it really old school.
Yeah.
Just looking, I believe one of these drawings shows where the well is.
Yes, it's to the, uh, if you're facing the schoolhouse, it's to the left.
Okay, yep, I see it now. It, it seems to me that this, these drawings in total have all that's required in, in this list, on the checklist. I, I don't know, uh, that's just my own assessment, quickly going through it, I don't, but I'll defer to others.
I think for the, uh, application we have, what is being proposed, I, I think it is adequate.
I, so too, even, even though from my package, I can't see all that you can, I very much rely on what you're saying.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, given the fair, fairly narrow scope of what's being proposed compared to what we often get, or, or off, the, more, of the more typical types of projects that we receive, um. So come, mark this complete. Consensus, Sarah, you okay with that?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Okay.
Does that mean you don't, I, I just need to send you a request for a waiver for the tax map and the topographical map? Or do you still want me to get those?
Yeah, no, those are separate.
Yeah.
Still, still get.
Yes, please provide them, yeah.
So, yeah, what we were saying was relative to that one thing about the about that, that big site development plan, that we're marking that part complete. Now we're more fun, so.
The next, um, item is a detail to scale, drawing showing location, construction specifications of drainage, roads, sidewalks, access points, uh, parking, et cetera, and, uh, the, uh, we do have a drawing showing the location of proposed parking, but most of the rest of this is not applicable, cuz it's not gonna be constructed. Does that sound reasonable?
It, it sounds reasonable to me, um. So bearing that in mind, I guess we'd, I, I would think we'd call it complete for what we're asking for.
Yeah. I mean, for example, there's no sidewalks being proposed. There's no new driveways being proposed. It's just use of the existing one, et cetera, um. No public improvements being proposed. The next item is documentation meets applicable state federal air, uh, regulatory requirements that should be not applicable. There's no air emissions associated with this.
Agreed.
Beyond people using their cars, um, soil erosion control plan, that's, um, one of the waiver requests, I believe.
I, I did see an email where I think that specific thing was indicated.
So we'll just set that aside until we look at all the waiver requests. Uh, the main DEP certified contractor name, that would be the same. Really, the only, uh, oil disturb, soil disturbance being proposed would be for the new, for some new parking spaces that are being proposed.
I talked to Gary briefly about the parking, uh, see this? And he was saying that this can't happen this way because of the street, School Street.
Right.
Um, that area in front of the. And that area in front of the building, I don't want to put, I wouldn't put pavement or anything. I would just, you know, gravel or mulch, you know? Lots of people are just parking on the grass. I'm, I'm not a grass person, but I would, if somebody, if the, if the driveway parking was full, I was just going to say that they could park there. Gary was saying that perhaps it should be angled or this way.
Yeah. The, the, since you brought it up, I was going to mention this just as a heads up later on, but and, and we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but in terms of the process, but there is a prohibition in the ordinance of you can't park, have parking spaces in the town right of way. And you can't have direct access to the road. It has to be like in a parking lot where there's only one point of access or to the, to a public road. But there are
Can only be here then?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there, there's some alternatives, solutions in the I mean, it, I, I, it isn't clear to me how many parking spaces you really need, but yeah, but for example, you could enter into an arrangement with the union church to use their lot or as a backup. And I can show you where in the ordinance, there's the language that deals with that when we get to the end of the checklist. If that would be helpful because presumably, presumably you're not going to be offering classes on Sunday mornings. So there's a way to skin that cat.
Great.
Location of site, structure listed on National Register of Historic Places. That I can't remember if that's on the list here of, doesn't appear to be on the list of waiver requests. Although we know that that's not one of the four in town from the comprehensive plan, so not applicable.
We can, we can do that.
It's not applicable. There are four sites in town. There is one in, one of the four is in Belgrade Lakes Village, but it's closer to Day's Store, not, not.
The granite house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Information needed to meet air quality standard, I would say that's not applicable.
Agreed.
One thing that the next item is information needed to meet access to public street standard. I didn't see that on the waiver list and I didn't see any information regarding things like line of sight. Those kinds of standards that are in the ordinance. So I guess we'll have to leave that blank for now, come back to it.
Yeah.
Estimated.
I don't even know what that is, what you just.
It's
Get back to that.
So at where vehicles would be coming out of your parking area based on the, there's a standard based on the speed limit for the road. How many, how far they're able, should be able to see what in either direction safely?
Unless the rules have changed, that was the health center's parking lot. So I would imagine that it meets whatever codes required for that unless the rules have changed since the health center moved.
Well, frankly, when that was in existence, there were no rules. So it has changed.
Okay, well, there, there's, there's no trees or anything blocking the view, but we can, whenever we need to talk about that, we can.
Yeah, it may be just a matter of going out there with a measure, a long measuring tape. Estimated quantities of flammable combustible and hazardous substances. I assume that's not applicable.
Not unless she has a bomb making class.
Oh, God. We won't do that one.
The next one would be not applicable as well. That's evidence it meets DEP citing regulations for oil storage and hazardous substance facilities. Copy of the application provided to the fire chief by the planning board or CEO. So that's our responsibility. That hasn't been done. So we'll leave that blank for now. Other information needed to meet material storage standard, including bulk storage of combustible flammable materials and hazardous materials. That, that's not applicable.
Agreed.
The visual impact assessment, that only comes to play on ridge tops and on the lake shore. So that is it not applicable, I would guess.
I would say not, not applicable.
Plan based on endless fish wildlife critical areas program recommendations to mitigate. So this the beginning with habitat mapping are all waivers are being requested for it.
Okay.
So I'll just leave those blank for now. Back to those. When we address the waiver. Information needed to meet the noise standard. I don't know what noise is going to be generated by this that is above and beyond background noise.
I would agree.
Unless your sister's quite the hooting and hollering partyer.
They're not teaching drum classes or anything like that, yeah. I mean, actually don't know what people are going to offer to want to teach, but there, it's not going to be noise. A noisy place. It's a residential community. So even on the rental side, there would be rules about no parties or.
Yeah. Exterior, next items, exterior lighting and specifications for lighting fixtures. I noticed that was addressed in the application. That simply that it was going to be the lighting that's there now.
Only, the only difference is I'm taking off the big parking lights that were on the health center and I'm just putting house lights on. There's no like, there's not going to be any signs or, you know, lighted signs or anything like that.
So is that not applicable again? Or, or, or complete?
I'm thinking complete. Because what's being proposed is to not have lighting.
Yeah.
Okay. Is board requiring post-development light monitoring reporting plan? I assume that's not needed.
I, I would think so, or I would, I would agree.
I would agree. And when we say that if it's not required, that we would say NA.
Yeah. Information to meet parking standard, I think we need to set that aside and discuss it separately.
Yeah.
Written statement from fire chief on capacity of fire department provide adequate protection. Somebody's, you gotta help me with how this works. That, is that something that we request or, or does Kate request that from the fire chief?
Believe it's the applicant that sends that request of for information.
Yeah, I think that's can be done by email with the fire chief.
And I think that it's very, I, I agree with what Rich said and recent commercial application, that, that's what they did too. So Brightside did that, I'm sure.
To Belgrade Fire Chief?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Written statement from partner.
I'm sorry. Okay, you know his name?
If I, I was just gonna Google it later, but.
His name is Dan.
McKenzie.
McKenzie.
Okay, great. Okay.
In fact, I think his email address is on the town website where they list all the different town officials.
Great.
Written statement from sheriff's department approving any proposed security measures. I don't believe any are being proposed. So would that be app, not applicable? Other board members? I would say so.
Yeah, we can, we can, I, I can agree with that.
Other information to meet public safety and emergency services standard. The application indicates that there'll be hardwired smoke detectors as required by national fire code. So that may be a met condition, a requirement, I mean.
Yep, I can, I can see that.
Information to meet screening of structures, parking lots and other non-residential uses standard. I think we'll need to come back to that.
Yeah.
It's in the village, but it's still, there's still one item that applies here. To scale profile face-on view of proposed signs.
No. Signs being proposed?
No, as of right now, I've just put eleven school street on the building so people can find it. And there's a little flag in the yard and I'm, I'm not going to put any signs up other than the address. I'm, I'm gonna have one entry door say the schoolhouse, the other entry door is just gonna say the classroom. No signs in the yard, no lights.
Yeah, that's not the kind of signs we're concerned about.
No, I'm not doing any of that, no.
Okay.
I wanted to feel like people are coming home, even to the classroom space, that they feel like it's cozy and homey. It's not supposed to feel like a business. Commercial space.
So not applicable then?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Stormwater management plan that a waiver is being requested of that, so we'll come back to that. Other information to meet stormwater management standard, the same. Subsurface waste disposal site evaluation form, that's not applicable because no new system is being proposed. I, my take on it.
That, that would be my take too.
Groundwater quality and quantity impact assessment. I
You need to worry about that.
No, we don't. Copy of deed restrictions related to drinking water and groundwater protection. I believe that's not a, that's NA. Copy of main drinking water program, public water supply approval and source water protection plan. That's not applicable because it's not going to be a public drinking water supply.
Right.
Copy of DEP stormwater management permit, that clearly is not applicable.
Right.
You know, phosphorus export control plan that a waiver is being requested of that, so we'll set that aside. Other information to meet water quality standard.
I can't even do a water test yet because we have to bleach, I mean, it was abandoned for so long. We have to bleach the well, flush it out.
Yeah. Actually, this has to do more with surface water quality, though. I'm guessing it's not applicable because other than stormwater and phosphorus, I can't imagine what else would be at play here. Anybody else have a different thought?
No. No.
So the rest of these have to do with, well, there's a series of these that have to do with mining. So I think we can exclude all those. As NA, unless you're planning to have a really big sandbox.
No.
There is. So I think, and if others disagree, there's a couple of requirements in the, at the end of the ordinance in the same section with mining and when solar, wind, I, I mean, commercial wind farms and, and those kinds of things where we have additional standards that is for overnight accommodations. And actually, there's only one and, and it once again has to, it's a safety standard. It only, it, it basically is that a requirement that the smoke detectors be hardwired, which that's the proposal. So I think we could say complete.
Yeah, agreed.
And then we're back to things like telecommunications towers, wind turbines. Yeah, and wind turbines. So I think all those are NA. And these are, we're not talking about if you put a wind turbine on the top of your roof and we're talking large commercial ones.
I'm not doing that anyway.
That's it. For the first.
Very quick question. I hope that Kitty doesn't mind this. Can we agree on a five-minute break? Do you mind?
You good idea.
Fine for me, yeah.
I really appreciate it. I need to stretch my legs.
Yeah.
No worries.
Doing that, Sarah.
No, five minutes?
You'll be our conscience for that.
All right.
So, so is, right now I haven't, I haven't like eight fifty-seven time here, so nine oh two?
Yeah.
Yes, great, works.
Thank you so very much.
So Peter, are you still with the state or you?
I, I am, I went from DP and went over to. The IT group, which is called, yeah, OIT, yeah, so. So I miss everybody at DP, that's for sure. It's a, it's quite a family over there, both Rick, George and myself all have our roots right there at DP.
Corey has met with a couple of his colleagues from the state. Because I, I think, I don't know how well you know him, but he's a woodworker, so he's had a couple of people come over to his shop, like he does this for fun.
Very cool.
Yeah, the other really coolest thing that he did was when. Downtown Belgrade was taking down all the trees, he went and he asked the town for permission. And he went and took a lot of the wood, although it was really hard because those trees were huge. So like when he went over to the green to get some of the wood, he was like, I don't even know how to cut. A tree this large, but then. It takes a while to dry, to dry it before he can turn it, but that, and he's kind of shy. I think you know, he's shy, but I work, I think he might come out of shell, but. So I was the one who then went and rang all the doorbells on, in, on Main Street and offered them up to all the homeowners that he had. Just donated all these beautiful bowls that he got from those trees to all the different homeowners. So when you were talking about the fire chief, I only know the old one from the, whose name is on the, the. House because I delivered him a bowl.
Bill Postifer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's really, really, really nice.
Wonderful feeling to do that, like he wanted to do it, but he. He didn't know how to like reach out to everybody and I was like, that's my thing, I'll just, I'll just start emailing people. And, and it was, it was a wonderful feeling to be donating those bowls and we gave one to the. Library and we gave one to Friends of Belgrade Lakes Village and. We kept one for ourselves and that was beautiful, I mean, I wished we'd had. Lot more time and a lot more people because that wood was beautiful from those trees that they took down. Um, he would be better able to answer that, but there was a lot of maple, yeah.
We took some pictures of, of the downed trees up at the, at the green. And my wife and I were like, we did it like a selfie, you know, standing there, they're like over you, you know, there was trees.
It's nice to know that those trees went to a good use.
Yeah, it feels good knowing that they, that, that they exist. Past their existence, they will forever be here in the, in the shape of those bowls now.
It is cool.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, I almost said, the schoolhouse started because my sister was thinking about like moving here. First she was like, I'm gonna live with you for the summer and I was like, no. And then it was like, she wanted a commercial property, but then she was like, wait, I think I want to live there half the time. And that's how the schoolhouse started, but she has lung cancer and things like. Got complicated, so I ended up doing it by myself and at first I was like. Uh-uh, I'm just gonna flip this thing, I, I can't do this by myself. But then my heartstrings got pulled, that's like a historic, even though it's not on the registry, it feels really historic there to me. The floors, I, I think I've counted the nails now, but you're sworn to secrecy because I'm gonna offer like. Free stay there, if you can guess how many nails that I personally pulled out of the floor. Hardwood, because it's, it's a really cool old building. Anyway, let's get back so we can get on with our lives, so now that Sarah's back.
I missed the whole story, so I will catch you sometime later.
And if I get approval, you'll all have to tell me what class you want to teach. I've actually had interest already besides the. The bookstore and other people I had. An acquaintance like through somebody I knew, through someone I knew, like all the way back to my childhood. Who was like, wait, I want to be a visiting artist, I'll teach a class for a week and she's a, she's got artwork in, in. Museums in New York City and stuff and I was like, yeah, I'm just not ready yet. Yeah, yeah, so there is good interest, I just don't, I'm not quite sure how to go about this, which is what's been great having your help right now.
Alrighty.
So I think the next order of business, Peter, might be the consideration of the waiver request.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's do that. Now, the, the email. That I think Katie went to. Anthony, that one? From Monday, May third, is that correct? So, so George, if, if this were the case. You know, Kate indicates, you know, a request for a waiver for the following and then list them, right?
All I did was copy and paste whoever had sent an email that I was missing these things. I just copy and pasted, can I have a waiver for all those things? Because I didn't know what they were.
It's all good.
So Peter, I, I just, you know, just for my own benefit, put together a list. And I came up with a minimum of seven items, which we've touched on. I have the stormwater management plan. The phosphorous. Control plan and impact on lake water quality. I have the national wetlands mapping. The beginning with habitat map. The natural and associated with that is the natural programs, natural areas program. Review. The soils map, the county soils map. And the floodplain mapping. And then I, I didn't know what to do with the item that was indicated, et cetera.
Anything else I don't understand?
So, you know. Not to cross the line here, but. We talked earlier about that might logically include the soil erosion control plan and the DEP certified. Contractor. Since there's no, that, that would be a logic, it seemed like a logical request. Probably something that UK would have to put into writing.
Which two things I need to put into writing, the DEP and soil erosion?
Control plan. And the certify, and the DEP certified. Excavation contractor, which is a soil erosion control certification.
George, isn't that just in the shoreline zone?
No, it's, it, that's also required on all these projects as well, regardless if they're in the shoreline zone or not.
Whom do I email for a waiver, Anthony again?
To you, Peter, wouldn't it?
It would have to come to the planning board, so you could.
To Sheila. So that it's distributed to everybody.
It's probably the best place to.
And I can find her email on, online, yeah?
Yeah, she's the deputy clerk as well as, well, I guess she's not planning board secretary anymore. She just does a lot of work for the planning board.
What's Sheila's last name in case? T H, okay, alright, so I'll.
I think that what you will have to do is look in the website for the, the deputy clerk web email. I'm not sure that she has an email under her name. Of the town.
Kate, this is Gary, it's just, it's, it's just deputy clerk. And it'll come right up. Deputyclerk@townofbelgrade.com.
Thank you. Okay, I'll email a waiver for those and should I, I know we probably have more business, but should I wait till I have everything together? It looks like I have to get two maps. Email the fire chief and get a response. Plus this waiver, whatever my next steps are, should I wait till I have them all together before I email? The deputy clerk with all of the information in one time, is that, is that the right way to do it?
To me, that would be efficient.
Okay, I won't do that then.
So then we could take up all the waiver requests at next meeting, Peter, and. And then I have the other information as well to check off on the. Or the completeness review.
Yeah, that would make sense, you know, provided Kate, it's time for you to get that into, into us.
I, I will. I wouldn't expect to be on schedule until I got this all into you. I mean, construction is just, I shouldn't say just starting, but we still have a ways to go. I just don't want to do any work on the interior classroom space until I know that that's how it's gonna be used. So I, I have time, but I wouldn't put me on the next meeting if I didn't have this in yet, so it's once a month or twice a month?
We're twice a month, the first, the third Thursdays of each month. We, we do is request that the information gets to the town office. So that Gary and others could see it for the agenda one week in advance of our meeting.
So Peter, um, do we have. Charles coming to our next meeting, is that when he's scheduled? To go over his first, his complete draft of the subdivision ordinance?
I believe so, Gary, does that make sense? Charles coming next time?
I believe so. Probably be the first meeting in June.
Yes, that's realistic, I think.
I'll get on whatever I need to get to. Quickly, just so you can have it and then put, put me on whenever it works for you guys. There's more things I need to do though, yes or no? An email to the fire chief and two email requests for two more waivers.
And, and we need to, Peter arranged to have the application sent to Dan as well. That's our.
Good point.
Our responsibility.
Then, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but Kate, if you email the. Fire chief and he doesn't respond, I don't think it's your responsibility to bug him, is that correct? You need to show us that you've gone to him.
Doesn't respond, okay. Just show you that I've emailed him.
Your proposal is a little different than others we've had where, again, you know, they're using. And storing hazardous substances, hazardous materials, flammable liquids, waste oil. Where, you know, the, we definitely need the fire chief to weigh in, this is no different than any other house or. You know, resident, you know, kind of. Regular structure in town.
But capacity is good to know, because what if someone's giving a speech and a lot of people want to go, like, so we, it's good for me to know that anyway.
I mean, he'll probably ask about fire, smoke detectors and things like that, but.
I'm not sure if you're ready to wrap it up, but I still have questions about the parking and. Let's see, whether anyone can park in the front if I put mulch down and don't have. You know, landscaper, anything there. And I will email, should I email the church and ask them for permission?
Well, let me explain that part of the ordinance for you and, and we're. We're in at in the ordinance, if you want to take a look at it for yourself. Is, it starts on page twenty six. And it's standards for parking spaces. By the way, just, this is aside, but we'll need once designated handicap space.
Oh, but see, this is the thing I need to know. Do, so right now it's just. A big, you know. Paved path that the health center didn't have any designated spaces, so would I have to mark those out? Paint, paint, you know, the way they do on the road. If I have to have a designated handicap space, that seems to imply that I'd have to designate all the spaces?
Good question.
Or can I just designate one handicap parking space and leave the rest?
Yeah, I think it's more. The latter.
I think so too, and George, because we talked about this with other applicants, right? We, we've talked about. Somehow indicating to anybody that would park there that they would know how to park. Need not only be handicapping anybody else, it. Need not be painted necessarily, but that's, that might be. One of the most efficient ways to tell people how to park.
Signage to say how to park, like.
Yeah, I, I would say so, just, just a sign that said. This space is a handicap and you just, this made up already signs that you paste them on a wall or stick on a, put on a stick.
Yep, okay.
And they put on a stick, I would not be sure, just, well, that will work in, in a known, a snow environment. But if you stick this sign probably to the house. High enough that even when we have a snowbank can be seen. That that space in front of, of the house is for handicap. Usually handicaps are, are the closest spaces to the building anyways.
Yeah, see that. Concern meaning being concerned for a handicap person, my concern would be that. The, this is the build, this is the schoolhouse building. This parking, the parking spot that's paved, that's on the residential side of the building. This classroom entrance is gonna be here. It, it offers more privacy to the residential neighbor to have the classroom space on this side. The windows are just all very high, so there's no, like, looking in each other's windows. I'm not sure how to designate. Through the town, how to, how to make it properly done, a handicapped. Spot here, because that's the closest entrance, but right now that's grass. If, if I, if I was approved to, I mean, I'd be willing to pay for. A paved spot right there, but that's part of the front yard, so that.
And, and that's problematic, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of, and as Gary mentioned to you, in terms of the ordinance. Actually, I'll, I'll read that to you. If I can find it real quick.
Pulling out that he was saying backing up onto a street is not. If there, we can talk about it further if the application is looking like it's going to be approved. I mean, I'm happy to spend the money to get the right spot for a handicapped person to get into the classroom space. If it's gotta be in the existing concrete or paved, paved part. I could just do a pathway over for.
Well, another possibility would be to have the closest of those in the existing. Be the handicap spot because if I recall correctly, you're proposing a walkway to the entrance. So that if somebody was in a wheelchair or had other mobility issues. But in terms of that, the parking spaces that you had originally planned for that, you know. People would be backing in and out of School Street. The on page twenty five of the ordinance, so if you want to look that up, to read it yourself is a whole parking section, but. One provision is parking spaces will not be located within the right of way of the public road. Another provision is no parking space and shall be direct directly accessible from the public road. So the whole emphasis is on off-street parking. The. That's why I mentioned. And again, it's not clear to me how many spaces you need for that classroom. Obviously have more than enough for the residential side. And then some, but so one of the provisions, and this is on page twenty eight. By the way, it's little paragraph.
Twenty eight of the application or of the ordinance?
It's little paragraph D and it and it reads, the development may include as a portion of its parking requirement, the provision of. Parking spaces not located on the same lot, provided that the space. That a written agreement is in place for long-term use of the spaces and that the spaces. Would not be among the minimum required for the use already existing on the lot. What, where, you know, like I suggested said, maybe Union Church, I don't know, maybe even the Catholic Church, I'm not sure. But that might be an option for you to pick up those spaces that you might need for the classes.
I thought you were talking about the Catholic Church. I forgot that Union Church has that back parking lot right there.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and maybe, maybe for a small fee or something.
Or maybe not even that, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, just an MOU perhaps might work.
Yeah, but we would need some kind of a written agreement. It doesn't have, I don't, doesn't call for a contract, just calls for a written agreement.
So if I email them and they email me back and I share those emails with you. That would work. For parking, yeah, or you don't need to see that.
I think agreement part is what George is saying.
If I email them and say. What I'm proposing and they email back, that's okay, fine, that's fine with us. Is that a agreement enough or does it need to be more legalized agreement?
I don't know.
The the agreement has to show some long-term. Holding if you will, or?
It specifically reads, a written agreement is in place for long-term use of the spaces. So. In terms of the substance, it would have to. Specify, you know, it's not loosey goosey, but you know, for a period, a a longer period of time. Doesn't specify what a long period of time is, but. I would think something. Even letter form, you know, that was signed by a representative of the church would probably be most in order. Would be my personal feeling.
Yeah.
Would you approve the application? I would email them anyway, just because I think that it's hard to tell how something's going to unfold where you'd like. We didn't plan for that and this is happening, or I I only have three people coming, I don't need your space or, oh my God, I have fifty people coming and I do need your space. So would you approve the space with just the parking spaces I have? And then I work on this part. Separately anyway, so that, I mean, like, do you need this to prove the application since you don't know what kind of parking would be? Required? Am I making sense? Like, it might just be those five parking spots are enough. It might be that they're not. So can I? Can the application be approved and then if a problem arises, then we manage it? I would, I'm still going to email both of them and I'll share those with you.
So so I guess what I give for you, Kate, is that you're going to email both the Catholic Church and Union Church?
Yes, but I'm wondering if that's. A stipulation for the approval of the project that that they agree.
Miss, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Gary.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
How big is the space that you're talking about for a classroom?
Oh, I'm so not good with like the math. The whole building is twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, just the, just the classroom.
About one-third of the building is my guess, so the back. Maybe a little bit more than one-third of the building because the back part of the building was an add-on. That's and that's not involved in the classroom space at all, so it's just the front. The front part of the building on the left side, it's not, it's not. I don't know how to guess the square footage, so I.
What what I was getting at is the fire, the fire marshal's office will tell you, you need fifteen square feet per person. So I'm trying to figure out how many people you might have in that classroom. And then the ordinance will will tell you how many parking spaces are required, okay?
Like off the top of my head, I'm wondering how many parking spaces are required for. The conservation center because. I would imagine that there could be times where somebody was giving a presentation. I don't know, I'll guess like a photographer, giving a presentation with slides, teaching photography. I'd imagine be the same as the conservation center. Where ten to fifteen people might show up. It's about this, it's a little less than that building. Sit in those classes.
So so you you need one, at a minimum, you need one handicap parking space.
Yep.
And then, and I'm sure you're not going to reach this, but you, after that, you need one per twenty-five.
One per.
Spaces, yes. So I would say you're probably going to have one because you're not going to have twenty-five parking spaces on your property.
Right.
And that's just for handicap, is that what you're saying, Gary?
It is, those are ADA requirements.
Yeah.
Now, Kate, you did mention that you was going to build a ramp.
Yeah, just because I want to, I want to keep it accessible for anyone.
Yeah, so you might want to try to try to get that parking spot as close to that ramp as you can.
The problem is that in the, that's at the school street. Place, so I'd have to. Put it in the, in the existing pavement and do a pathway over.
Oh, I see, yeah.
The the way, the only way to get it right close to the door would be to create. One parking space for a handicap person right there.
Well, you could do, you could do it in the existing drive that's there now and and create a pathway. That goes to that new ramp on the front of the building.
Right, that's a good suggestion, Gary.
Yeah.
But I I can do. I think I'm bringing up the conservation center because. I'm not sure how many parking spaces they have and that, they have the street parking, so that's different. But the parking spaces at the schoolhouse as it sits today are very similar to.
I understand that. I I'm honestly, I don't know that those parking requirements were. Were requirements when they built that structure.
Right.
I'm not sure. The other thing I just wanted to mention, we talked about sight distance.
Yeah.
I don't know what the speed limit is on that road. But it's.
Twenty-five.
Is twenty-five?
I think so.
So it's it's ten feet per one speed limit, so it's two hundred and fifty foot sight distance. And I've been down, and I've been down there and I'm sure that that's not going to be an issue.
Okay, I was just going to tell you, I have no idea what that means.
Means for every mile per hour, you have to be able to see ten feet. So if it's twenty-five, if I pull out of your driveway, I need to be able to see two hundred and fifty feet either direction. Both directions. And I don't think that's an issue.
Yep, it's very open right there.
Yep. Yep. Okay, that's it for me for now.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Yep.
Thank you.
So getting back to Kate, your question about would there be a stipulation of having the basically an M O A? Or some sort of agreement with the other off-site parking before this is approved? Um, that was a question on the table, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know how the other board members feel. With that. I'm thinking. I guess I'll just toss it out there. I think, I think it could be a condition. Do the other board members feel that would be appropriate? That'd be okay with me.
I would be okay with that, but if it had a caveat before you started operating the classroom. Rather than just leaving it open-ended. Because the classroom's really going to, is really driving your parking needs. And I wouldn't feel good about just leaving it up in the air, open-ended. That's my personal view.
And might I just suggest that that a little bit more, maybe a little more conversation with Gary, who knows?
Isn't there a section, I don't have it in front of me, but I know there's a section in the commercial development review ordinance. That says what what the requirements are for parking for certain uses.
I think you nailed it, Gary.
Yeah.
Page twenty-seven, there's a table.
Whatever it is, I don't have the book in front of me.
Yeah, and that's okay. I mentioned it really more for Kate.
Because. Okay.
Pulling it out of thin air, just want to let you know that there is a bait to.
Yeah, so I looked at that and I'm not really sure what a good analogy is to some of the land uses there, you know, I I don't know. The closest I got was. Just for your benefit, Kate, this is a table that shows like. Oh, for. Theater or church or grocery store or an elementary school, how many spaces are recommended? Either on the basis of a thousand square feet of floor area or. Seating or or some. Measure of that nature and and so I don't know what's a good analogy. I I kind of approached it, I I tried to come up with an idea, maybe how many spaces you might need and I. Relyed on your estimate of the peak traffic. Which you had it eight per hour. And I don't know what the basis of that is, but assuming it's correct, you know, that if you had eight people coming, eight. Cars coming to your.
Did I write that eight per hour? I meant maybe tops eight per class.
Yeah, okay, well, eight per class then.
That's just me imagining stuff, yeah.
Well, that's probably as good as anything at at this point. So if you have eight cars arriving all basically the same time. There's eight spaces, you have the one that you need for the residents, of course, and then the one handicap, so. You know, that's only ten spaces, you you have six in your parking lot, existing parking lot.
Yeah.
So. You know, maybe you only need another four or so, you know, or maybe a half a dozen at most. And that's why I I. Mentioned the. The church, churches as an option. There is another thing I should point out to the other planning board members. We actually have authority may, the planning board, this is again on page twenty-eight, the planning board may waive the installation of parking spaces. This kind of goes to the question that Kate asked, the planning board may waive the installation of parking spaces provided that. Adequate provision is made for the development of these spaces as needed in the future. Specified by conditions of the permit. Such conditions may require a permanent set aside of adequate space. And provision of construction plans along with specified conditions under the installation. Under which the installation will be triggered. I think that's a little different. I think that's where for a situation where. The, there may be in a, well, the same uncertainty in the sense of. Not really sure how many clientele you're going to have. And if you exceed, you know, say you plan for ten and you get. And eventually you realize that you're going to always have twenty-five, then you build additional parking spaces.
Right.
You don't have that option, really.
I kind of do have the option to extend what's existing further back because the land is flat. And I think that's why Mark Berry added acreage onto that lot. With the idea that somebody might need parking for a commercial space. I don't want to have to add that. I guess I don't want to disturb, I like the permeable land. I don't want to do more pavement there if I didn't have to. That's why I was like, oh, people could just park on the, on the dirt in the front if they needed to, because. I used to live on Shoreline in Connecticut and I'm just, I'm, I know. More pavement just means more problems for. Water and flooding and, you know, keeping the environment. Clean and functioning properly for the lakes. I wouldn't want to add more concrete pavement there. But if I had to, I could add back. So I feel like if what you just read meant if I had to add more pavement in the back, I would be willing to do that. But I prefer to use the churches if they agreed. My belief is the biggest problem with this idea right now is the parking. Everything else seems like super easy to manage. And I don't want to just give up on the idea because of the parking because. Then it's just going to be residential and the town kind of loses access to this building that. Pretty much always belonged to the town.
Yeah, there there's another. Reason you. Think about, another aspect to think about in terms of expanding. Parking outback. It would make it difficult for us at that point to waive things like the stormwater.
Right.
Run-off requirement because at that point you're starting to do some construction.
Right, so I guess you, yeah, so you were mentioning that with the. With the, what you just read in the ordinance. But then if I were to say, okay, now I'll add parking to the back, then I'd have to do all those other tests.
Peter, you know, you asked earlier about each of the board members. Feelings or opinion about handling the. The park, the parking for the. Beyond the existing six spaces. By way of a condition and, you know. Thinking out loud, you know, earlier I'd said, well, I I would want a caveat that it was available prior, you could say an arrangement. An agreement with one of the two churches prior to the start of the operation of the classes. Actually, I think about that more. I would probably be amenable to having a deadline. Out six months or something like that, so that there was sort of a trial period to figure out how many spaces were needed. I'd still want some kind of terminal date, you know, by which we would know what we're approving. But maybe that would be a happy medium, I don't.
Yeah, maybe so, and I didn't know if. Conversation with Gary, Kate, could help you determine based on the size, if you did the calculations. Because Gary asked an important question.
Yeah.
We've got. Square feet of commercial. Part is residential, right? So. Sort of talks about some of that. And you kind of do the math and think, okay, this what we need is what we have. This much in overflow would be done with an agreement. I'm just tossing that sort of.
So you said it was maybe possibly around a third of the square footage. You know. Eight hundred square feet. Eight hundred square feet, possibly, if you're talking about twenty-four hundred square foot building. That would give, having that conversation with Gary would, you know, I, I would measure it, not take my word for it, but.
Yeah, sure.
And Gary, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard you correctly. No one can park along Main Street and then walk over to the schoolhouse, cause it's a super easy walk, so like it's the evening, Hello Good Pie is closed and I'm offering a class, you know, whatever, photography class, anything, whatever you wanna guess. And they park in front of Hello Good Pie, that's not allowed?
I think that the ordinance says that it has to be on lock parking.
Yeah. Anthony's actually brought this up before about isn't there a way, we, we'd have to change the ordinance, but isn't there a way in off-hours to?
Yeah, we talked about it, yes.
But I, I think which require change in the ordinance is the.
Yeah, I think so too.
How do I know as the owner of the classroom space where people are parking? That's up, that's on them? Like, I'm providing as many parking spaces as I can through my lot and then hopefully through the two churches, but if they park along the streets.
I don't think you have any control over that. As long as you provide what's required.
And I think that's the, the key point right there. Is determining that those numbers of spaces you can provide, provide them, what people do.
Yeah, you can't be held responsible for that.
Okay, so it sounds like I just need to try to get the churches to agree to let me uh, direct any clients, participants overflow into their spaces.
Yep, I think it's a really good plan with also your conversations with Gary to really help determine what you can do based on the math, right?
Okay. Any tips on how to approach the churches with that? Just, I'm, just aren't being used at night, can I use them?
Well, that and, and frankly, you're um.
Just good nature.
Well, there's that, smile a lot.
I can't smile in emails.
Yeah, no, I can't. Um, and um, I mean, this, basically the story you told us about, you know, the kind of contributing to the community is pretty persuasive with me and might be with them too.
I would hope so, cause otherwise the building just becomes a private, you know, residence rental space, that's not, I mean, I don't know, it kind of loses its value in the community and it always had value. I mean, a lot of people wanted it to be like a craft brewery or a restaurant, that's not my thing. I could just flip it and sell it, but I really like this idea.
I, I do like the idea a lot too. Okay, as I, as I'm listening to all this, I can I can't avoid to be excited.
Is the biggest problem.
On a personal note, I think that's gonna be easy solved with asking the churches. You asked me, I had gone to both churches downtown. And the um, the head of the churches, uh, the priest and the pastor on both uh, churches and even, I think the union church is more guided by kind of a council. It's a group of people that does this. They're very welcoming. They're, they're very approachable. And uh, I ju, rather than just sending a email, I, I will uh, kindly make a phone call to them and fill your way through the chain of command little by little and then figure it out, ask who you should address the email to. It make kind of a personal email. People in, 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 in Belgrade Lakes Village are wonderful. And your idea is very unique and uh, a welcoming one too.
Well, I live right here in town too. I mean, I'm walking distance downtown, which is part of why my heart's gotten attached to all of this, so.
So I think it's gonna be a win-win for everybody. And that, that's the reason why we have the planning board to, to filter in how things are done and make sure that we all are, are makeable neighbors uh, in a sense and I think uh, uh, what you're doing here is wonderful, so.
Sarah, what do you think about um, approaching Ernie Merkins? He's.
Oh my God. You gotta uh, pin it all at once, cause Ernie is, is a, is a strong uh, elder in the church and then he's a selectman, I didn't thought about that.
Which church?
Uh, the Union Church.
Yeah, you, you may find.
That's the closest parking lot too, to the schoolhouse.
You may find when you talk to Ernie, um, if you do, uh, you may say, yeah, we'll bring this up at our administrative board meeting and you may find that the next administrative board meeting is three weeks away or something, so you may not be able to get a quick and prompt answer as you really like to.
That's okay, and just so you guys know, it's probably gonna be July before I get back on your meeting schedule, but I just wanted to have a clear idea before I start any interior construction on that room, other, cause if this doesn't work, that's just gonna become more residential space. So I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna do anything and make a mistake financially until I know. You know, I, I was supposed to be doing this with my sister as a partnership, she can't do it, cause she has uh, lung cancer and it's not well and you know, taking mortgage down on my house to do this, I just don't wanna do it wrong. Wanna make sure I don't make a, a stupid mistake. So, I feel like I know what I'm, I know what my next steps are, some emails, some maps. And it'll probably be July before I'm back on your, if it takes a while for the church to get back to me. Seems like the parking spots are gonna be the biggest.
Yeah, I think that's the mo- major challenge, you know. All the other stuff, it's kind of small stuff.
And if the churches are not agreeable and I still wanted to go through with this idea, I would have to create more parking myself, which would require all those other things that I asked for waiver for to no longer be waivers, yeah? And it sounds like that would get expensive.
It could.
Say something, it, it doesn't just have to be the churches, I mean, it could be at one of your neighbor's house that has a, a a large parking area, doesn't have to be the churches.
Right, I, I only mentioned that because those were the most obvious ones to me.
Yeah, and, and honestly, the, the spaces that she might be asking for, I think is pretty minute. I don't think the churches are gonna have a big issue with it. All she needs to do is, is start that ball in motion.
I, I do think Ernie's a good place to start though with Union Church, cause he's um, very enthusiastic about Belgrade Lakes Village, he's very enthusiastic about the church and the community overall and just a general nice guy.
I'll start there then. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I, I, I think you have a great idea. I uh, I, as I told you, I'm very excited about it myself. And uh, I think you're gonna see out of this uh, what has been celebrated at your place, small winners. So, uh, you gotta think, as, as you put, putting on this application, I think you gotta think big. And uh, uh, having the churches uh, involved and uh, engaged, you have them as a treat them as a good neighbor yourself will produce a lot of good things for the community.
Great, I hope so, cause it's been a lot of work. But it, it feels worth it so far, so. Um, okay, great, so I will try to get all of this back to you and then see when I can be on the next meeting.
Look forward to it. Thank you so much, Kate.
Thank you guys for your help.
Very welcome. Have a great night.
You too, bye.
Hi to Cory.
Oh, I'll tell him.
Alrighty, um, thanks everybody, that took, took, took a little bit of time to get through that, but I think it was very helpful for the applicant, that's for sure, so. Next on our, on our agenda is B, Commercial Business Activity Inquiry. This is past and future uses of the Augusta Road or a Belgrade canoe and kayak. Is that something we wanna take up now?
Well, myself, I'm gonna have to sign off because uh, I have to go to work tomorrow morning and I can't stay up late.
Look to the other board members, I mean.
I think um, I don't think it'll take a lot of time and um, I, I think uh, Sean has a sales agreement in the works that this is, is gonna be a factor in, so. Is my understanding, just from the email traffic with Anthony.
Yeah, I would think that, that from what I've seen in email traffic, uh, my thought is we probably won't need along. Shouldn't take more than ten or fifteen minutes to get through it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, Pete, if you guys.
I'll hang in there for ten minutes, hi.
Quit the soldier.
Alright, so we've got the in-agreement for Sean to be doing some stuff over here. Um, I know some email traffic that I've seen. Potential of having some additional um, what do you call it, storage of boats there to, to show, possibly for sale, is that what I saw correctly? But then associated with that would be concerns of other materials that might be stored there, right? George, you brought up some really good points about that.
Yeah, well, I, I just didn't understand what the proposal was, uh, uh, by the way, one of the other things that, uh, in the, that I got from those um, that email traffic is, is office space, I believe, for his business operations. But um, yeah, it sounds like there's no repairs or anything like that being proposed there, it's simply rentals, his rental business, boat rental business, uh, some sales of boats and office space and that's it, no, no repair, you know, no concerns about generating waste and, and those kinds of issues that came up with his boat shop. And uh, and the other question, I, really, that, most of my questions, which Anthony answered uh, was uh, had to do with, you know, at what point do, does a facility lose its grandfather status if ever? And Anthony mentioned that, I, I didn't know this, but apparently that's actually been in business, not that I could tell by driving by, but um, but uh, it's just been operating at, you know, sort of a slow bubble. And so, you know, I, I erroneously thought it was out of business and had been for years.
Can, can I shed some light?
Pretty dark here.
Yeah, if you recall, I, I mentioned to you the old mona- monastery school that wanted to go on the depot road. That I lost that case and, and the judge determined that just because it had been closed. If, if they hadn't got a permit to change the use, for instance, they didn't change, they didn't get a permit to change it from a, a dance school to a residential home, then even though it's vacant, the grandfathering doesn't go away. And there is no timeframe. And there's a lot of court cases that he pointed to me that, that showed me that. In my conversation with Sean, Sean indicated that nothing's gonna change. He said, frankly, the building ought to be bulldozed. He said it's not worth even saving. All I'm gonna do is have a little corner of that building that's my office. I'm gonna put my rental boats there, which I think will make his neighbors happy. And I might have a few boats down there to display. There's no addition to the building. There's no change in the parking lot, nothing changes on the property, other than a, a few boats parked out front. So Anthony and I have a meeting with him Tuesday. And we wanna get in writing from him exactly what he plans to do, so that we have a record of it. And then we'll make the determination whether we feel that he can do that without planning board approval or if he needs to go to the planning board. There's no repairs that are taking place there? Or any of that?
That's good, that's, thank you for sharing that information, Gary.
Yeah, you, I know you've told us that before and I totally spaced it out, so I'm glad you brought it up again.
Yeah, well, and Anthony said, I, I would feel more comfortable if we met with Sean and, and he's meeting with us at ten o'clock Tuesday morning. And we want a detailed in-writing list of exactly what he intends to do there, so if anything changes, then that's a different story.
So as a planning board, I think probably our best bet is to wait. Uh, now that we've discussed this and we've had this information, knowing that there'll be an outcome from Tuesday's meeting will probably be the most important thing for us. Something that Gary can handle as a CEO on his own, we'll know that. If it's, if it comes to planning board, we'll know that too.
We'll let you know.
Yeah, I, and I'm fine with that. Um, I, I do wanna say that just based on the information that Gary and Anthony have provided us so far, if that's the scope, I, I don't see where, and, and you know, Sean agrees to that, you know, that, that put, he puts that down in writing, that that's the scope. I don't see where this triggers the commercial development review ordinance, myself.
We do want it in writing. We want everything in writing as to what's gonna take place there, so if there's any change that we can go back and say, look, this is what you said you were gonna do and now you're doing this, that's a change.
Yeah, no, that's only prudent.
But it, it, it might. Well, here's the thing, if all his rental boats are parked there, if all his rental boats are parked there, we know for sure he's not gonna be launching them in the stream across
There's the upside.
That's the upside, he's gonna be taking.
It's a good use of that property.
He's just, I think he's just looking for some visibility. He said it's a satellite office, I, I'll probably won't even be there long, you know, much at all, I'll be at my house. But if somebody calls me and wants to meet me there to look at a boat that I might wanna sell or something, I'll meet him down there.
Makes sense.
Now, the, the only observation you have to uh, this fee uh, for use of a, of a location that, that had the same purpose is that different than the kayak and canoes, the boats uh, have a motorized component to it that they will have in a, if you wanna close it up, they will have uh, oil and gas in, in a small chamber. So, gas and oils are not being brought in kind of separately from the boats, but they probably will be in the boats. And we didn't have that with the previous business. So, I'm not sure how the town handled that kind of difference or if, if, in, if in the planning boards mind, there's a difference because of that. I just, I thought I, I put it out, cause it, it happened in my mind.
I think we'll know more about that Tuesday when we meet with him.
Sounds great. Well, we will know it's, it's boats. And we know, well, we probably would need to know, they're brand new boats that are completely probably clean of any chemicals, so to speak.
No, he, no, he doesn't sell brand new boats.
I don't know, we might need to understand then how he's gonna be able to contain any possible spillage of that, if, if one of the boats have a uh, uh, engine that is leaking or something of that sort, I, I just, I'm, I'm just talking out loud, I'm not sure.
No, we'll, we'll make sure that we ask that question and address that, that's a good point.
Eric, you've probably already thought of this, but um, the uh, that parking lot's a little on the shallow side, um, so you might wanna ask, you know, how he's gonna be moving boats in and out of there so that, you know, we don't have uh, him bu- uh, backing trailers off of Route twenty, that busy section of Route twenty-seven into the lot. That could be something of a traffic hazard for sure. That could be something of a traffic hazard for sure.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll ask him that.
And, and George, we know it's only a forty mile per hour zone and no one at speeds going through.
Yeah, that's, that's why they used to always have that trap, that speed trap there by the post office.
It's still, it still is. It's just a change of command. Now we have the sheriffs.
Ah, funny. Alright, so, so are we in agreement? We'll, we're in standby mode until we hear back from Gary after, which would be the result of the meeting next Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. Great.
Does that meet your needs, Gary?
Yes, it does.
Okay, awesome, awesome. So, so, um, if that's it for that, we've covered new business. Really, it's other businesses at this point, which are meeting minutes. Do we have a few minutes just to go through those? One I can vote on, the other one I cannot. Pete, same for you. So let's do the one that, uh, that you and I can both vote on.
Alright.
Which are the meeting minutes. Let's see, from.
Twentieth.
Yes. Uh, April fifteenth. Peter Rushton, George Seal, Craig Rich Baker, Sarah. Or, oh, we're here. Actually, Pete, if you need to go, I think you can go because you were not. At the fifteen, meeting of the fifteenth, it doesn't show you, nor were you at the meeting that was the twentieth.
Okay, I'm lucky. Alright.
Thank you, Pete.
Alright, see you later.
Okay, is it okay we go on to the fifteenth, meeting minutes of the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. So. The meeting minutes from the fifteenth, um. I, I would stop for this. It felt like we talked a lot that, that night. And it would be almost impossible to, to gather that in, in. A few pages, so, um. I trust that the key. The key elements are there, which include the minor changes that are enumerated. Does anybody have any edits?
The only thing I would maybe suggest, and it's not very important really, is. The green boatyard, item number four there, um, probably should be in, uh. Uh, parentheses or whatever, whatever they're called there, um, and green boatyard program, uh. Somebody reading this first time or not knowing was, they might, what the heck is the green boatyard? Uh, is it somebody's? Somebody buy green or anyway.
Like the, actually the color versus the name.
Yeah, uh, I just think, you know, parentheses around the green boatyard and add the word program.
Gotcha. Yeah, quotations, Rich?
Pardon me?
Like using quotations, quote.
Yes, what did I say? Parentheses?
Maybe, maybe, but.
Quotation, like, yeah.
Yeah, quotation. So, uh, for Sheila or Julie who's ever hearing this recording. Minor change number four, quote, green boatyard program, end quote, was discontinued by state of Maine. Rich, does that sum it up?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, George, you have any?
Um, yeah, one, um. Under the old business commercial development, the second paragraph, um, there's something missing there. Motion to edit. Findings of fact, uh, D as suggested by Michael Hodgson's by Craig Alexander, and then there's a asterisk. Looks like maybe something was gonna be added there after all. Add customer and before tours, add commercial seconded by Rich Baker. So I, I'm not sure. I, I, I can't recall, you know, what that's referring to.
Neither, neither can I. Um, so I guess I would ask that either Sheila or Julie, who, who's ever listening to this. They could add some clarity to that paragraph. Maybe they'd have to go review the, that meeting, that recording from that meeting.
Yeah.
Good to have that, cause it's, I, I was confused, quite frankly. I was like, I'm not sure what that means.
I think what it might mean or whatever is after the word all. Add customer and before. The word, does it say tours?
Yes.
Add commercial, whatever, so.
Oh.
It's, it's, I understand confusion, but I think that's what she might have meant. Maybe if that's the case, she could put after the word all, um.
Add customer.
At, at, if, even if that's what it's supposed to say, it could be clarified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, Rich, thanks for saying that, cause that was, that was good, cause I, I can't remember. Uh, how that came up, but we think we wanted to clarify that it was commercial boat tours, like for example. So that's what she's indicating there, right? Is to add word commercial.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Peter?
Yep.
Can you read that again? I might be able to remember.
Sure. So it says, um, asterisk, after all, then in parentheses, add. Customer and before tours, add commercial.
Nope, I'm confused.
That makes two of us.
Five of us.
So, anyway, let's, let's ask for some clarity on, on that to spell that out a little bit more clearly. Anything else that we can? Request? Or change?
I don't have anything.
So having said that, do we approve something that we, we still need clarity?
I, I don't think we can. We have to wait till changes are done or, or places changes are come, those conditions, I guess.
I'd like, again personally, just make sure it lays it out as we're thinking.
It, it wouldn't take two minutes for us to approve it at another meeting.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Alright, so therefore, uh, do we wish to table this until? These are revised?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to table the minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, pending, uh. Uh, revision.
Second.
Motion seconded. Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling? So Rich?
Yes.
George? And Sarah?
Yes.
Yeah, wait, I can vote. I'm in favor of tabling to, to, so. Four in favor and none opposed, it will be tabled. Let's move on to the minutes from the twentieth of April. I cannot vote. I was not there. You three can.
Uh, now, now that I'm looking at this, uh. We approved, uh. Adam's, uh. Application and I don't remember, we will talk about the clear, show the clear opening. I think, I don't remember seeing that in his drawings.
It, he did in the revised, what, the revised drawing that he submitted in his second application.
He did, okay.
Yep, he did, yeah.
For some reason, I, 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 I gassed out that, that was there or whatnot. I.
Yeah.
It happened in a long meeting, I will tell you that.
And, and, uh, that's, Sarah, that's why I, that's the only reason I knew to ask. If it was five or six thousand square feet of cleared area because it was indicated on the drawing.
Okay, great.
It's a good question. Hey, uh. Are there any edits to be made to the minutes from April twentieth?
I don't think so.
We've got a couple of them.
You have a couple?
Uh, yeah, hold on a second. I got, my computer went to the, um. Okay, uh, for present, uh, actually unless Steve De Palma. Uh, was in an outfit, he was there. I don't know whether Olivia was there or not, but Steve De Palma is who we talked to.
Yeah, she was there as well.
Okay, so Steve, uh, Steve needs to be added to the people present. Then down under new business, uh, findings of fact completed and following conditions added. Uh, paragraph one, uh, best wastewater practices should be scratched. That's not a, not a. The first sentence or whatever is, covers it, yeah. Uh, and then. Paragraph number two, I don't know, what the heck is this, uh, HTTPS, uh, YouTube stuff on there?
I think that's the link, uh, to the, uh, uh, meeting itself, cause those are recorded and placed on YouTube.
Okay, but does that need to be in our minutes under paragraph?
No, that should be taken out, as you suggested, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh. Alright, um. Oh, uh. The other thing, I, I think, uh, second page findings of fact completed. Um, it talked about the following issues noted, height, uh, show cleared opening. The other one was the, uh, uh, certified contractor, uh, should be headed there, number four.
I see. So add number four, uh, provide these DEP certified contractor.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yes, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. Any, anything that is above what Rich said?
Nothing additional.
Sarah, anything?
No. By the way, Mr. Baker, I thought Mrs. Baker was strict and tough, but you are beyond that.
Not really.
Funny.
If you were about ten seconds earlier, she would, you would have, she would have heard your comment, because she's walking around the house getting her sex. Walking around in the house, yeah. Anyway, alright.
Alright, so we have, have some edits that we've talked about already, um. Uh, I would, in a motion to have amended minutes.
Uh, make a motion that we approved the minutes as amended, uh, then the minutes are from April or whatever, twenty. Or May, April twentieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes, April twentieth as amended.
I second it.
And say, thank you, Sarah. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Rich?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
That's three in favor. A quorum passes it. Uh, none opposed. Alrighty, um. And I think that brings us to the end of our evening.
God, I hope so.
I know, I know.
I, I put a motion to adjourn.
I think, motion to adjourn, set, do I hear a second?
I'd second it.
Any more discussion? I just wanna thank you all for all the extra work that you've been doing. Really appreciate it.
You too, Peter.
Thing, let's get through the backlog.
I wanna, uh, apologize for joining in late. The, my board, my school board meetings are usually at seven, so I was waiting for the seven o'clock tick tonight. And Anthony gave me a call, so.
Well, you really didn't miss too much anyway, because the meeting, even without you, didn't get started till about quarter after six, uh. Because it wasn't, wasn't active or whatever.
Yeah.
Alright.
We had a technology, tech, technology issue.
Hey, Peter?
Yep.
Was Julie not here tonight?
I didn't see her.
I wonder why. Do you know why?
I do not know why. I don't. Hopefully, he will know tomorrow. He made me the host of this meeting, um.
No.
Yeah, after we started and it's like, and he texted me, Ju, he was trying to get ahold of Julie, but then he said, you're gonna make me the host of it, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
The minute is being recorded, isn't it?
It is. From my perspective, Sarah, it said, I can see a little button that says.
I see, I see, I see, okay.
Yeah.
So does, uh, uh, Julie, is she the one who usually starts the meeting and gets, organizes it and stuff? As far as, uh.
Yes.
The link, everything, yeah.
Gary, is that right? Cause we always see Julie.
I think so. I think so. I just, I need to find out what happened to her. There's nobody heard from her.
Hopefully, nothing bad.
Well, hopefully, nothing bad.
Yeah.
But nobody heard from her and nobody knew where she was. That's why Anthony had Mary switch the host over to, to Peter.
Okay.
Buddy, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Another, another very productive night, so. Thanks. Have a great night and have a better weekend.
Yeah. In there with us, Gary.
See you later.
Thanks.
See you, man.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, goodnight.
Good night, all.
Good night.